And they might be able to do some work, you know, while people are still inside. Yeah. Tours.
You know, it's interesting, I haven't seen Joe or the sheriff for over a month. I talked to him every day, but I haven't seen him for over a month.
I thought the same thing, I thought, yeah.
Oh, of course.
Better, because otherwise he'd be sick.
So are we ready to go?
Ready to go.
Seven?
I believe so.
Ron, pardon, Tina.
Rick, you're set?
I'm gonna start screaming now.
Okay, good deal.
I'm taking this for you.
Good.
Yep.
Good.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to be able to make a comment?
Can you mute it, is it?
Yes, I am.
Yes, I am what? Hello?
Can you mute them, John?
Good evening, everyone, this is a regular meeting of the, no, it's a, what is it? Regular conference meeting of the township of Montclair. Notice of this meeting has been provided to the Montclair Times, Herald News, and Star Ledger. Notice has also been posted on the bulletin board. And I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Mayor Jackson?
President?
Hello?
Deputy Mayor McMahon?
Hello?
Here. Hear me?
Yes.
Do you hear me?
One second, sir.
Yes.
Hey, Rick? I'm here.
This is Robin, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, this is Bill, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me, Bob Russo?
Yes. Yes, Bob, we can hear you. Yes, Mr. McMahon, we can hear you. Yes, Mr. Hurlock, we can hear you. Yes, Councilman Schlegel, we can hear you.
They've gotta take it off the, they've gotta listen to it through the feed, not the TV. They've gotta turn up the TV's thirty-four or something.
So all, uh, all the council president, can you mute your YouTube?
Here.
Okay, pledge of allegiance, and when we're done, I would like to have a moment of silence in memory of Florence Russo, the mother of councillor and former deputy mayor and mayor, Bob Russo.
Hello? Hello?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please.
Hello?
Yes.
It isn't working.
No. Can you hear me?
Thank you.
I can hear you, Bob.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, but.
Can you hear me, Bob? I can't hear the meeting.
We can meet you, I can't hear the meeting.
Can you hear now? This is Tony.
I can hear you, I can't, I couldn't hear the mayor or anybody.
I just turned on my mic, can you hear me?
Wait, hold on, I'm sorry.
Let's do a, have a, the panel call, do a vote call.
Mayor Jackson?
Yes, President.
Deputy Mayor McMahon?
Here.
Councillor Baskerville?
Present.
Councillor Hurlock?
Present.
Councillor Russo?
Present.
Councillor Schlegel?
Here.
Councillor Spiller?
Present.
So, Mr. Fan, are we at a point where when people are coming in, we don't want to hear it?
Here.
It's disruptive of the meeting.
Uh, yes.
So how do, so you got?
I can lock it right now if you want. I can then have a feature that can lock the meeting.
Well, how do you, but how do people then join? Would you just open it up and have five minutes where they would join in?
Yes, sir.
All right. Just gonna change the order of the meeting around a little bit so that members of, so we can be a little bit more efficient, in particular with respect to our, my colleague's time. So I'll be the bad guy on that one.
Tony?
You can't.
We can, we can hear you, Tony, but we cannot hear the mayor.
My mic's on. Well, I may have to swallow it at this point, how much louder, how much closer do I?
Can't hear the mayor.
Can you, can you hear me now?
A little bit. You're very, you're very distant.
Is there any way to turn this up? Because, I mean, otherwise they're gonna be screaming into the mic. Is that better? Can you hear me now, Rich? This is working, because you can hear it in the room, it's working.
Oh, okay.
The conference has been locked.
This is Robin, I can't hear you.
Not through the phone, I hear you on the TV.
Hello, hello, test, test. Can you hear me?
I heard that.
I think it's a situation where you just have to speak very, very loudly.
Can you hear me now, Rich?
I hear Tim.
Wait, and Tim wasn't screaming. Yeah, Tim, yeah, Tim's not even.
I do not hear, I see Rick at the mayor's microphone, but I did not hear him.
Rich, can you hear me? This is Councilman Spiller.
Yes.
Okay, might be your mic, ma'am.
Can you hear me? Rich?
Is that Renee?
Yes, hi, good evening.
Did you hear Renee?
I could hear Renee.
He said he could.
He said he could.
Can you hear me now, Rich?
Uh, somewhat, better.
It's just me.
There you go.
Might be that picking it up. That one's picking us all up.
Rick, do you have a loud mic?
Wow. Um, can you hear me, Rich? Okay, can you hear me?
There you go, I got you.
All right. Uh, we're going to.
I hear the mayor.
Okay, I can be heard, I got it. We, we have a couple of, we're gonna switch the ord, the order of the agenda around a little bit. Um, we're gonna do new business resolutions, then do the discussion items on the agenda, which are very few, we're gonna get that out of the, out of the way. And then we're going to come back to public comment, and then the hearing on the, the second reading on the ordinance. So the first item is a resolution awarding contract for 2020 spring tree planting, and I so move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councillor Baskerville?
Yes.
Councillor Hurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McMahon?
Yes.
Councillor Russo?
Yes.
Councillor Schleger?
Yes.
Councillor Spiller?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson?
Yes. Uh, the next item is a resolution authorizing a place-to-place transfer, expansion of licensed premises, a plenary retail consumption license, and I so move.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to withdraw on this, on this resolution, because I'm conflicted on it.
Would everyone on the line kindly put their phones on mute? And it's imperative that if you're watching the simulcast, that you put your TV on mute as well, if you're listening on phone. Because we can hear what has been said a few minutes ago while we're conducting the meeting. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Did I move that already?
Yes, and there was a second.
Roll call.
Councillor Baskerville?
Yes.
Councillor Hurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McMahon?
Yes.
Councillor Russo?
Yes.
Councillor Schleger?
Yes.
Councillor Spiller?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson?
Yes. A bill resolution, Councillor Schleger?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, I'm second here, I'm sorry. Whereas invoices against the township of Montclair in favor of the following persons for the amount set opposite their respective names have been received duly audited and found correct. Therefore, be it resolved by the council of the township of Montclair and the county of Essex that said invoices be and they are hereby ordered paid and that checks be drawn by the finance department to the order of such persons for the amounts respectively and herein after stated on the computer printout attached hereto and made apart year of. This bill list is dated April seventh, two thousand and twenty, the amount of eight million, eight hundred seventy-two thousand, five hundred two dollars and fifty-nine cents, and I so move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Councillor Baskerville?
Yes.
Councillor Hurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McMahon?
Yes.
Councillor Russo?
Yes.
Councillor Schleger?
Yes.
Councillor Spiller?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson?
Yes. Mr. Stafford.
Thank you, Mayor. On December seventeen of two thousand and nineteen, this governing body by resolution R nineteen two fifty accepted the highest qualified bid for one new plenary retail consumption license submitted by Plasic Enterprises LLC. By that resolution, the deputy municipal clerk was authorized and directed to proceed with all required steps for issuance of the new plenary retail consumption license. Further to same and based upon the facts that the submitted application form is complete in all respects, the appropriate fees have been paid, the applicant is qualified to be licensed according to all standards established by the applicable statutes and ordinances, and the applicant has disclosed and the issuing authority has reviewed the source of all funds used in the purchase of this license. Item one would be a resolution that would authorize the issuance of the new plenary retail consumption license to Plasic Enterprises LLC. On January twenty-two of two thousand and twenty, eight bids were received for a project to improve Tours Park. More particularly, this project would include replacement of the existing baseball backstop, fencing, bleachers, and playground, the relocation and replacement of the water fountain benches and refuse containers, installation of access footpaths, as well as tree trimming, tree removals, and tree plantings. After analysis, recommendation is made to, and item number two's resolution would award a contract for this work in the amount of three hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-six cents.
Yes, I'd like to play that, you keep putting the queue, my phone.
For the base bid only, to the lowest responsible responsive bidder, Passano Giordano Construction of Kenilworth, New Jersey, and if the governing body would indulge me, I would ask that you take action on this item tonight, simply because, given the closure of all parks in the state of New Jersey, it may give us the ability to get this work started quicker than normal. I'm available, of course, to answer any questions should you have them on this item.
I'd like to move, uh.
I would be happy to move that, Mr. Stafford.
Second.
Questions, comments? Uh, roll call.
Councillor Baskerville?
Yes.
Councillor Hurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McMahon?
Yes.
Councillor Russo?
Yes.
Councillor Schleger?
Yes.
Councillor Spiller?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you for that, I'll inform Mr. Woods, as well as our finance team, so that they can get the proverbial ball rolling quicker than normal. Uh, the township received a certified local government grant from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection State Historic Preservation Office, otherwise known as SHIPO, in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, to prepare a cultural resource survey of the township's estate area. The township issued a request for proposals to provide the required professional historic preservation services and received one response to same. That proposal was reviewed, and based upon that analysis, recommendation is made to, and this resolution would award a contract in the amount of nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars to E Two Project Management LLC of Rockaway, New Jersey, to perform the scope of work approved by the State Historic Preservation Office. Regarding item number four, on August eighteen of two thousand and nineteen, a consent order was signed declaring the township's housing element and implementing ordinances that include a local housing rehabilitation program to provide affordable housing to low-income and moderate-income households constitutionally sufficient, and approving the township's two thousand and eighteen spending plan. The township requested a proposal from Community Grants Planning and Housing, the township's current affordable housing administrative agent, to administer that local housing rehabilitation program. The firm submitted the proposal, including a not-to-exceed cost of eight thousand dollars for program setup and administration, and a not-to-exceed cost of seventeen thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars for case management for an estimated three cases per year. This proposal was evaluated by the Economic Development Committee, which recommended consideration of same by the full governing body, and this resolution would award such a contract for one year to CPB, I'm sorry, CGP and H for the referenced work. Item number five, applicants for development projects are required to deposit funds in escrow. The projects listed on Schedule A have been determined to be substantially complete, all relevant fees have been satisfied, and there appears to be no further basis to retain the escrow deposits listed thereon. This resolution would authorize their release and would direct the township's chief financial officer to issue checks for same to the applicable developers. And Mayor, that's all I have regarding agenda items this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Uh, we're now gonna move to the public comment period. Um, and again, this is for comments not related to the rent regulation ordinance. Uh, comments that are in the public comment period, if go into the rent regulation ordinance, I will instruct Mr. Fan to cut those individuals off, apologies in advance, but I will cut, cut you off. Uh, you can then re, come back into the queue for the discussion about the rent regulation ordinance. Um, and I will also limit comments to three minutes, and the, normally we're not as draconian, I could say about that, but we are gonna be fairly strict tonight about the time limits. Uh, so, in an effort to minimize exposure to COVID-nineteen and to maintain social distancing practices, the April seventh Township Council meeting will be available to the public remotely only. Comments from the public on the second reading of ordinances, as well as the public comment portion of the meeting, will be conducted remotely. Those who wish to participate should dial into four two five, five three five, nine four eight four at the start of the meeting. Participants will be put in queue, and again, this is for a public comment period. When I announce the second reading of the ordinance, then you can do, do the same procedure. The administrator will notify callers using the last two digits of their phone numbers, which will be displayed in the system. For example, a caller with the number nine three seven, five five, five five, five five will hear the administrator say, number five five, it is your turn to speak. The caller will then hear, hear the word unmute, and will be offered the opportunity to make his or her comment. Moving forward until the pandemic is over, public meetings will be conducted in this manner. Uh, Mr. Fan, we will listen to the first individual who has, who was queued up for a public comment on items not pertaining to the rent regulation ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. Call the phone number ending with one five, you be unmute?
I'm here to testify on rent control. Do I need to wait?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, please, please, ma'am. Uh, we're going to ask you to hang up and redial when the mayor announces that the public hearing concerning that ordinance is open. Thank you.
Next caller, please.
Hello, public comments for rent control?
One second.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say it one more time. This is not the portion of the meeting for conversation or comments about the rent control ordinance. This is for items other than the rent control ordinance. If you have a comment about some, on the rent control ordinance, hang up now, and we will have an opportunity to come back in the queue. If you have a comment about something other than rent control, stay on, and Mr. Fan will queue you up. If you do not have a comment about something other than rent control, uh, if you do have something about a comment other than rent control, hang on, and Mr. Fan will queue you up. Otherwise, please hang up. Mr. Fan?
I heard it.
Cell phone number ending with six two, you online?
Hi, this is Charles Formally, an attorney with Project Rowan Roseland, thanks for giving me the opportunity to make some comments. I will comment later on the rent control ordinance, but the comment I have at this point deals particularly with the decision of the council to conduct business on any substantive matter that is of high public interest during the period of this global pandemic. Uh, I think our governor has set a good example through his variety of executive orders indicating that municipalities should be sensitive to the fact that public participation in the business of government needs to continue. And that's why you're conducting business electronically, which I think is a great idea. The difficulty and the particular challenge about a governing body such as the township of Montclair is doing tonight, considering anything of substantial public interest, you will deprive the public of an opportunity to engage in a state statute guaranteed right of referendum. That is, that any member of the public who determines that actions that you take in passing ordinances, uh, the state government has given the public a right to petition the government thereafter for a period of twenty days to have the matter put on the ballot. By conducting business on any matter of public interest that would garner political attention and that might garner a petition for referendum, deprives the public of the opportunity to engage in protected referendum activity. I think both as an attorney and as a former mayor myself, I think it's foolhardy to the township to proceed on any matter of substance on an agenda during a global pandemic, unless it is an absolute emergency. And I urge you to review all of your agenda items and make a determination of whether it's in the best public interest to deprive the members of the public the right of referendum that the state statute has guaranteed.
Thank you, your time is up, appreciate your comment. Mr. Fan?
Next caller, ending with phone number seven seven. Hello, ending with phone number seven seven, you on?
Next.
Next caller, ending with phone number three three. Next caller, ending with phone number three three.
That's my number, and I was calling to discuss of the rent control ordinance. So I now have to hang up and then call again.
Yes, ma'am.
So when do I, I dial again?
When the Mayor Jackson announces shortly, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Phone number ending with three four.
Hello?
Hello, you are on.
Yes, uh, I have a comment, I fully support what the first speaker said.
Go ahead, you have three minutes.
We got it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's it, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Phone number ending with one eight. Phone number ending with one eight.
Next.
Phone number ending with nine five. Phone number ending with nine five.
Next.
Phone number ending with zero zero.
Thank you, uh, I agree with our, with the first caller, this is not the time to be making any large decisions in, in a pandemic, in a, in a crisis situation, and, uh, on a virtual platform, it's just, this is not the right time. I'm not saying it's not the right issue, but I think that we need to really think about the timing, that's all.
Thank you. Phone number ending with two six.
The beat is off, it's just audio.
Phone number ending with two six.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, I will speak again later on the rent control portion, my name is Alan Hammer, I'm a property owner in town for many years, and I have to agree, of course, with my partner, Charles Formally, that this is the wrong way to handle a matter with this importance.
This is not, this is not about rent, this is not, this is not about rent control, cut him off, cut him off, it's not about rent control.
It's just wrong. Thank you.
Phone number ending with zero zero.
Yes, uh, Stephen Foster, Earlton Park Road, Montclair. This is not the way to conduct important government business. People can't get through, the TV is on a different timeframe of the audio. You said three times what people should do to oppose the ordinance coming up, people still don't get it. It's just embarrassing to think that this is the way we're gonna conduct important, make important decisions on something. I'm opposed to any serious decisions being done in this matter, I'd be counsel, thank you.
The conference has been locked.
Phone number ending with five two.
Yes?
Yep, you are on, sir.
Uh, yes, my name is George Mahoney, I'm a property owner for many years here in town, I also have a business here in town. Uh, and my comment on this is that this is totally wrong, uh, especially the timing of this one, not in the situation. Uh, I think the sound should, should look better than this. And, uh, you know, we just need, need a, a break with a, with a timing.
Timing what?
And I think we should think about this and leave it for another time.
Cut them off, that's rent control, cut them off.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next phone number, ending with five-five.
Yes, phone number ending in five-five, and this is non-rent control related, public comments right now?
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Oh, yes, so I disagree with the first several callers about what's happening right now with approvals. I disagree, and I disagree for many people. I'm disagreeing for Juanita in Moncler, for Louis in Moncler, I'm disagreeing for William, Joshua Martel, Shakira, Jean, Peter, Ellen, and Teresa. I'm disagreeing for Jeff, Michael, Dayton, Brenda, Timothy.
Mahava, is this a comment about, is this a comment about rent control? This is a, we're not having comments about rent control. Yes, we're not having comments about rent control.
Right, neither were the first ones, right?
I'm sorry?
Those weren't about rent control.
Well, you cut them off.
That's why I cut them off, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Phone number ending with one-five. Phone number ending with one-five, you are on.
Next.
Phone number ending with nine-two.
Three, this is a caller, this is five-two, my name is Hammer Gannon, nine-two, and...
Uh, you got two numbers dialed in right now, so, one second. So, you are on.
Hello, my name is Sam, hello, my name is Sammer Gannon, I have been living in town for 15 years, and I live here and I also own a property. I don't believe this is the right time to be conducting this business, there is not enough of...
Next.
Next caller, ending with phone number nine-zero. Phone number ending with nine-zero. Hello, you are on.
Next.
Phone number ending with two-seven. Phone number ending with...
Hello, how are you guys?
Good.
My, my name is Michael Ring, I'm a property owner in Moncler and I'm against the rent control and I think this is a very important topic.
Cut them off, please. We're getting to that point.
Yep.
It might be better just to eliminate it if anybody wants to comment during the other report.
You might be right.
Phone number ending with nine-one.
Hey, this is Juliette, this is Scott Kennedy calling, good evening, Bob, everything well over there?
Doing well.
Bob, I gotta tell you that this technology debacle is precisely why we should not be conducting any business other than pro forma bill pay and emergency coordinating efforts. Emergency coordinating efforts for your community, the shut-ins and the elderly and the emergency first responders. This technology is a disaster. What's happening online is a good thirty to sixty seconds after, and Bob, we can't hear you over the phone spot when you speak, but we can hear you on the, on the screen when you speak, but it's sixty seconds later. Um, Bob, I want to thank you for your dedicated service over the last two terms as our mayor in leading Moncler in one of the finest states it's been in over fifty years, so thank you, Bob.
Thank you, sir.
I'll call in later on the rent control issue.
Thank you.
Good night.
Um, I think Mr. Stafford really had a good idea, because we're gonna keep going through this and people are gonna be talking about rent control despite our best efforts to try to get people who have comments about other things to get those comments in. And just by way of editorial, you know, my opinion is rather obnoxious to keep trying to come in on the issue when, when we haven't designated a time for it. It is, I think, part of our societal problem is that it's my, you know, no matter what, it's, I'm gonna do what I want to do despite the, the rules and regulations. And I think it, anyway, I won't, I'll stop there. So what we're gonna do is just open up, up the, um, public, the, well, let's, let's start, let's first have Madam Clerk do the, um, the ordinance introduction of the, of the second reading.
The conference has been unlocked.
Hold on, hold on.
May I wish to report that this ordinance has been posted on the board and this is ordinance number twenty-zero-five. Ordinance establishing rent control in the township of Moncler.
Again, those who wish to participate should dial into four-two-five, five-three-five, nine-four-eight-four, and you will be put in a queue. The administrator will notify you that the, of the last two digits, by the last two digits of your phone number, which will be displayed in the system. For example, a caller with the phone number nine-three-seven, five-five-five, five-five-five-five, will hear the administrator say, um, number five-five, it is your turn to speak. The caller will then hear the word unmute and will be offered the opportunity to make his or her comment. So, Mr. Phan, we have people who want to comment on the, on the ordinance, those folks can now dial in to get in the queue and we will, are you ready to have comments on the rent regulation ordinance?
Can you give me thirty seconds?
Certainly.
Because people are dialing back in, they just need to speak.
Okay. Hold on.
On the board, and this is ordinance number twenty-zero-five.
Um, again, those who wish to participate, into... This will be displayed in the system. Five-five-five-five, the administrator say, um, first, this will be displayed in the system. For example, a call...
Hey, if you can allow another fifteen seconds, then people are dialing back in, so...
Between us and TV, yeah, that's, that's not like...
It was her.
We'll, we'll begin the, the hearing shortly, give us a few seconds.
The conference has been locked.
Ma'am, are we ready?
Yes.
First caller, phone number ending with nine-five.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, my, my name is, my name is Keith Agarwal and I am the owner of property in Moncler. I have invested in Moncler for the last thirty years. I invested in Moncler with the town because this town always provided an opportunity to improve the properties and put new investment in there and allowed landlord to set the rents as per the market forces. I am against the rent control as this will turn away many new investment in the township of Moncler and over the time the township will not be, will be less desirable place to live. The town already has very high astronomical property taxes and a rent control will eventually result into lesser development of quality product and it will increase the tax burden on residents. Further, I think this is such a monumental, an important ordinance and it is being heard at a time when this should not be done this particular manner. It is so hard to see, so hard to hear, and this is a pandemic going on, a lot of people cannot participate. So I strongly recommend and suggest this ordinance should be not considered today for any consideration and postponed for the better time. Thank you.
Thank you. Phone number ending with eight-four.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm an owner in town, I do want to echo all of these statements said before. I do think conducting business in this manner during this pandemic is just not appropriate at this time. I think it undermines the public interest. That being said, I do thank you for all of your service. When it comes to rent control, I am absolutely against it. I think it's totally counterintuitive with the direction Moncler has been heading in for a number of years now, and it inhibits development across the board. I don't want to waste too much time, so I'll let others speak, but I am absolutely against this, and I hope, I hope others can speak to it as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I got a anonymous caller. Sir, you are on, oh, man. No, they will say unmuted. Hello, you are on.
Are you talking to me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Larry Hayes, I've been a resident and homeowner for forty-one years. As a marketer and economist, I am not a proponent for rent controls. However, even if I were, I would find the proposed ordinance profoundly objectionable. In the time allotted, I can cite only three types of objections, but there are far more. First, a well-designed ordinance should target existing residents who face especially severe challenges in meeting the rent obligations. However, this ordinance places caps on rent increases that apply not just to current residents, but to anyone who might move to Moncler in the future. Why Moncler should privilege these people is unclear. Moreover, the ordinance establishes two classes of renters, households with and without a sixty-five-year-old member. The proposed maximum annual rent increase for the former is four and a half percent, for the latter, two and a half percent. But there are certainly households with and without seniors who can afford to pay marked rents, just as there are homeowners who struggle to pay their property taxes and other expenses and certainly will in coming months. Why we should blindly privilege all renters over all homeowners isn't clear. Next, the four and a half percent and two and a half percent limits on rent increases are intended to prevail for a ten-year life of the ordinance. We've all become accustomed to historically low inflation, but there is no guarantee that this will continue. It's instructive to remember that US inflation rates were more than twelve percent and thirteen percent within, within memory. Social Security payments and many contracts include an indexation mechanism. Why this ordinance cannot include the same indexation mechanism isn't clear. Moreover, upon an apartment being vacated, the ordinance limits permitted rent increases to ten percent of the rent charged to the prior tenant. Consider the case of an apartment vacated by a seventy-five-year-old person who occupied it for ten years during a time of high inflation. A ten percent increase would certainly not bring the permitted new rent to anywhere near market levels. Finally, the implementation and enforcement provisions of the ordinance are incredibly bureaucratic, cumbersome, and...
Sir, sir, your time, your time is up, we'll have to move to the next person. Tony, the next person, please. ...the possibility that, under certain circumstances, two unelected...
Next caller is a...
Give me a thirty seconds, please, so I can listen to that.
Thirty seconds?
Yes.
I will.
I didn't hear it.
Hello?
Yes, you are on.
Is it my turn?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much, my name is Ken. First of all, I'd also thank the council members for trying to make the public meeting working, but having watched the video so far, I feel it's not working properly. I have been to prior hearings on other subjects before, the way that we can hear other comments have entered, changing, I hear, this, 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 I, I, though, it's all, people who put, calling in experience, I called five times before I could even get on the, on the, on the list because I was ticked off the, the list, I couldn't even get on the list four fewer times. So I believe this is not the right time, it's not the right format for such an important meeting and it's important for all other peoples to have a chance to participate, including seniors or people with disabilities that the technology should carry. And also, I believe, now rent control will not help Moncler. Rent control will limit the owner's ability to make repairs, keep up the standards, and bring together buildings. And also, it's unfairly imposed, as this other speaker said, some people who are sixty-five eight have a good income and good resources to pay rent. Doesn't mean the, the younger people will not have the, will have the sufficient resource to pay rent. So it's not exactly age dividing this gap and the whole ordinance has no consideration of person's income at all. So it's, economic regulation that doesn't take into anyone's economic condition to impose the restriction. So, and also there's no consideration of the owner's financial at all in this consideration. So, I think this ordinance is good intention, but it needs a lot more input, a lot more debate, and a lot more consideration from other parties. And from what I've heard...
Thirty seconds.
In the last few days, because I just found out about this last Thursday, the, people commented from group of tenants, but doesn't seem to have enough input from the other parties that may be stakeholders in the whole ordinance.
Five seconds, sir.
I appreciate your time, I appreciate your consideration, please consider more importantly...
Thank you.
...what Bobby's put to forward, like any business.
Next caller, ending with phone number three-three.
Good evening, this is Sharon in Lincoln, Turner, are you able to hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Hello? Excuse me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Are you, okay. Um, Lincoln and I live in town, as well as we own property in town. Um, Lincoln and I live in town, as well as we own property in town. In fact, my family's lived in Montclair since the late eighteen eighties and Lincoln has been the landlord in town for forty-plus years. I was extremely saddened to learn that we're having a council meeting to discuss rent control during a pandemic. I question, is it even, I question, is it more, immoral? In fact, as of today, nine o'clock in Montclair, we had a hundred and eighty-nine positive cases of COVID-19 and nineteen deaths. My condolences go out to my community and neighbors who've lost loved ones. I don't see how this is a priority at this time for our town. My focus is on the care and well-being of my ninety-three-year-old mother. Both my husband and I are members of the at-risk vulnerable group and we're praying that we just made it through all of this. Today, one of my dear friends is being buried. She was a Mountie, class of nineteen sixty-nine. We are still mourning her death. These are our priorities. While I believe rent control definitely needs to be addressed, does it have to be during a pandemic? Is the priority at this time? I'm simply requesting that this important topic be postponed, tabled to a more appropriate time, perhaps when the governor deems it appropriate for us to get together and do things like this, but not during a life and death crisis for this community, our state, and the world as a matter of fact. Before a final, a final decision about rent control is made, I think we should have an opportunity to weigh in and be heard. I think everyone should. The final outcome not only impacts landlords and tenants, but neighborhoods, future renters, essentially the entire community. It should not be decided during a crisis when everyone is focused on staying alive. We are not in business as usual times and we should not behave as if we are. I urge all of you to delay this vote until everyone has an opportunity to discuss this matter at the appropriate time. Thank you so much for your time, Sharon and Lincoln.
Thank you. Next caller, ending with phone number four four. Phone number ending with four four. Thank you for your call. Next phone number, ending with six nine. Hello? Phone number, ending with six nine.
Tony, I gotta text that you should speak up a little bit if you can, push your mic up a little bit.
Next caller, ending with phone number six nine.
Yeah.
You are on, sir.
Yeah, that's me.
Go ahead, sir.
I'd like, I'd like to, all right, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
You can hear me?
Go ahead.
All right. I'd like to see hard evidence demonstrating the extent of the abuse by landlords, how many, what the [inaudible] the tenants, the impact, who are [inaudible]. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Do you mind?
All right. Um, two, an impact study showing the extent of the, i.e. those paying more than thirty percent of their incomes, whose incomes are below sixty thousand dollars, those on low fixed incomes, those [inaudible], you know, who are they and how many are they, what's the problem? I'd like to see an impact study that demonstrates historically, uh, rent control affects the community in the short and long term. The rent control ordinance, and this agenda was not put on the town website, and I'd like to address that. Uh, you know, I feel like you are obligated to the will of the majority as well as to protect you as a minority, um, and the rent control ordinance and this agenda, as I said, was, was, was put on the town website not until April fourth and only after my wife wrote a protest about, about this to the mayor and the council, when, when only a specific group of tenants consistently showed up, when the council votes on the first reading of rent control, when it was not even on the online agenda, when the council does not publish the proposal, the proposed ordinance online, and when page two of the ordinance excludes two and three family buildings and page four does not, you can see why this is a very, at very least, efficient. So, um, you want people in Montclair to vote for you, to trust that you will act to now best interest when you don't even inform us.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Virtually done. Finally, we appear to be, just one last thing, we, we appear to be going into a great recession or post-repression where incomes drop and rents are forced to respond and trend downward. Owners will at that time have very real economic difficulties due to ordinance by its inflexibility and lack of comprehension does not respond to. Mr. Spiller suggests that we have come too late to counsel to adjust. We should have.
Sir, I apologize, we're gonna have to cut you off and go to the next person, your time's up, thank you.
Next caller up, last numbers in their phone number, one one. Again, caller with number ending with one one.
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, all right. Uh, I'm a thirty-one-year homeowner in Montclair and as a member of the Montclair Housing Action Group, I support the rent control ordinance. Um, I think rent control's been an issue here since I moved to Montclair and I think this is the perfect time to pass such an ordinance. Uh, there's so many tenants, uh, are adversely affected by this pandemic and I think the financial effects will be felt for years and tenants, especially the seniors on, on fixed income, would greatly benefit from cost certainty and I think this ordinance would be a great first step towards that end.
The next caller will be number ending with nine one, please, nine one.
Yeah, Julia, it's Scott Kennedy calling back. Thank you, two six three, Putt Street. Renee and Sean, I am absolutely utterly dumbstruck over your lack of a moral and ethical conscience. Your underhanded, sneaky, and so-so very undemocratic of you to attempt to bring this financially impactful ordinance up for a vote during a pandemic. A global shelter in place, restrictions on gathering, a state of emergency, the two of you have put your desires to be mayor ahead of our community's needs and the proper functioning of our government. The people in Montclair are literally dying under your feet. Your citizens, hundreds have been infected. Our minds are on our survival and we're trying to keep our loved ones literally alive. My condolences go out to Bob Russo, who lost his mom this weekend, who is also grieving, and we appreciate him being online tonight. We are mourning our neighbors who have died and we cannot even gather to properly pay our respects. We have all lost our jobs and the two of you think this is a great time to sneak through rent control. You both have taken the time to conspire behind our backs, under the cloak of COVID-19. Do you both not have a moral bone in your body? This type of law should be completed out in the open during a time when we can all work in the same room democratically, craft a law that works for all constituents. You both swore an oath to represent all of us. Table this vote until all of us have had a time to get past this and recover and we can regroup. Mayor, due to the technology failure, our rights and the rights of our neighbors are not being represented, they're being violated. The very people who are waiting online, who are listening to the video on TV, who do not get to hear their number called, cannot respond. So I shall move that this moving be terminated immediately for a technology failure. Good night.
Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending with two six, two six, please.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, number one, this is Alan. Between these years, my family's been property owners in town for over sixty years. I must say, I've been doing business from home for the last two weeks and my audio and video on my computer is very, can't hear anything the mayor or any councilman is saying, not a word. I can hear most of what is said by the people calling in, with a few exceptions, I can't. But not that we can't hear a word of what you're saying up on the, in, in, members of the council. One, I frankly, I feel like you're treating all landlords in town as if we've been aggressively raising rents and abusing our tenants. If, if this was an open meeting, you would probably have not one in person in attendance from the almost three hundred apartments in which I have an interest in town. We provide most of the affordable housing in Montclair with a small A. We wish we were invited to participate in this process, which we have recently learned has been going on for months. We have been, we've been, we've shared with you a small, we could have shared with you what a small piece of apartments we rent to Montclair residents. Most of the tenants that move into our apartments come from surrounding towns in New York City. We would have asked you why there's a difference in seniors without an income tax. Sure, seniors may be entitled. I'm a senior, I wouldn't ask an income tax. I take great pride in the fact that we operate and maintain some of the nicest apartments in town and do so with modest annual increases. The increases that we put through are less than you're allowed in your ordinance and we've been doing that for years because we're able to make up the difference in, in, in our vacancies. Uh, as I wrote to you in my letter, you are not the enemy, you're an important part of the fabric of Montclair and have been for many years. We should have had a voice in this process. If we did, I would invite people to gold cast our buildings on Claremont Avenue, on Walnut Street, and see what nice buildings they are. They would see that the homeowners on our streets appreciate the fact that we operate buildings on their streets where they live and take great pride in our property. We've been in town, as I said, for many, many years, have great pride in our property, our tenants appreciate what we're doing. What you're doing tonight is really wrong.
Thirty seconds, sir.
I've been involved in rent control matters for many, many years, fifty years, and I have never seen anything like it. It really is offensive and it's wrong and you, you shouldn't. Don't ask, speak, speak before that, said it a lot better than I could. Thank you very much for your courtesy in this matter, limited however it is.
Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending with zero three, zero three, please. Caller with a number ending with zero three, please. Moving on, the next.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you, please.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you. Um, you know, I, obviously, there's a lot of feeling about holding, uh, this type of meeting in, at this time and I agree with everyone, it is hard to hear everyone clearly and I think that, I, without saying that I, it's a good or a bad thing, I think this should be postponed until people can meet together. That's the first thing. Second of all, um, without really researching the long-term effects, decades possibly, of some, of something like this, the residents, we need to know how this is going to affect our town, our resources, the, the tax implications, the many, many things that this could trigger. And I don't know that there's been research done on this, I, I truthfully don't know that, there may be, and I would like to see it and at least review it and, and have a discussion with other people present as we usually do in these town meetings. So I think that it's really important to postpone this until such time where the information can be set out before all of us, we can ask questions. I have some questions to clarify, uh, that I need clarification on before I even know how to think about this. Uh, I'm a real estate broker in the area, I'm a homeowner, I'm a landlord, I'm property management, and I, I don't even know if people there have this kind of expertise to be making these decisions. So I would like to hear everybody speak at a town meeting together where we are all together. And thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending in five two, five two, please. Caller with the number ending in five two, are you there?
Yeah, I, I would, my name is Sammer Gannon, I live in town for the last thirty years and I don't think this is the right time for us to be discussing this because many reasons other people have arguments. Additionally, I think this will have a terrible effect in town because if landlords stop investing in town because we cannot recuperate their investment, this will turn the town into a slum area of unkept tenants. We don't want this for our town. We want our town to remain what it is today and market forces should determine what the right to turn an investment is to people, within reason, obviously. Again, this is not the time and this is the time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Fan, if I just make one question, uh, is, is it blocked now? Are you, okay, will you reopen it at some point, at the, well, we get to some calls and we have to, because if it was here, we would, people walked in the door, they'd be able to speak, so, we don't have to do it now, but at some point reopen, thank you.
The next caller will have a number ending with nine two, nine two, please.
Yes, hi. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank you for your service, for being there in this pandemic and risking putting your life at risk. A lot of people are not happy right now to participate. I can think of neighbors, old families that are sick and fighting for their lives right now with young children and people don't have the energy to digest all this information you are throwing at us. Um, as a landlord of fifteen years in this town, I, I honor to be in this town and I have not raised my rent in years and I've taken care of my properties and we are not, as some other callers have said, we are not the enemy. The [inaudible] you have in place today, a lot of people have commented about it, I will too, it's not serving the public. I've been bumped off more than two or three times how to keep calling. This meeting is too important for the viability of this town for us to be conducting our business this way and as other people have said, it's immoral. Sons, again, are fighting for their lives here, our neighbors, and so are we. So postponing this to a better time when people can digest this information, it is fair and that should be, it's a moral thing to do. There is very little logic to, um, the rent control that privileges people over other people. This is, and we also don't understand the COVID-19, what, in fact, it will have on landlords and renters. Whatever has been written before COVID-19 needs to be reviewed and looked at because life will not be the same once we pass this pandemic. It's gonna take many months, if not a few weeks, and life will not be the same. So everything will need to be reviewed and taken into consideration again. So there's no logic in passing this now before we know the weight of what is going to happen. And this is a political sham and it's a conspiracy and I am very, very, very hurt by how this town is treating its landlords and its victims. And they help you.
Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending in seven six, seven six, please.
Hi, um, people often ask, if not now, then when? My name is Freedom McLean. I have been a resident of this town for over thirty-some-odd years. I have been a resident of this town for over thirty-some-odd years, as well as a property owner of rental property. Do the right thing and vote yes for this ordinance. It's critically important. I have, I'm a senior. I have friends whose rents have been raised seven hundred dollars a month because we do not have rent control or some type of stability for the individuals. I urge you to do the right thing and vote for this ordinance. I appreciate your time and energy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next caller will have a number ending with zero zero. Double zero, please.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, please.
My name is Marilyn Graham. I'm a thirty-one-year Montclair homeowner and a member of the Montclair Housing Action Group. I'm calling in support of the rent control ordinance. I am touched by many of the callers. I know this is a terrible time for all of us. And I know that this was not meant to be something pushed through during a pandemic. That was not the intention at all. It's just turning out to be terrible timing. We do need some sort of rent control here. We do need to protect our most vulnerable. Everyone stay well, stay safe. Bye-bye.
Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending with seven three. Seven three, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Deirdre Malloy, and I'm a fourth-generation Montclarian, former owner, now renter. My family has been here since the early nineteen hundreds. I am in favor of rent control, and I want to say to the owners who have called in, I certainly emphasize with your concerns, however, this has been discussed for more than a year. It has been discussed publicly at the council meetings. We have, many of us, publicly invited owners to come out and have conversations. All of the tenant organization meetings were publicly advertised. In fact, more than once, articles were in the local newspapers, including the front page of the Montclair Local. Rent control is very important, and while, yes, we understand that some of the landlords in town are not raising rents in an unconscionable way, which in fact gives you upwards of four-point-two-five percent to do so, I'd like to say to you that it's unfortunate that you did not come out, you did not have the opportunity, as you're saying, to speak, but Sean Stiller, Renee Baskerville, and this entire council have not been trying to do anything behind the scenes. Nothing could be further than the truth. And in fact, on March tenth, which I believe is twenty days for April seventh, as to the gentleman's point of a referendum, I think it is an appropriate timing, unfortunately, during the COVID pandemic. I too am being impacted. Someone on my work was tested positive, and I know people who are unfortunately no longer with us, and so certainly my condolences, condolences to everyone. And just want to say, it's an auspicious time for business owners and landlords to take a look at the opportunities herein. And of the eight hundred owners of the Property Owner Association of Montclair, make up less than fourteen percent of the owners, but unfortunately, forty-two percent, forty-two percent of Montclair residents are renters, and the majority of them are not being able to stay, holding two and three jobs, trying to make ends meet. And as the woman said a moment ago-
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
We do not know how this economic time will be impacted because of COVID and everyone going through layoffs and such. But I just want you all to realize that this is not something that the council tries to sweep under the rug, and in fact, I personally resent that because it has been in the open. It's just I think people pay attention to what they want to pay attention to and perhaps thought that this was something that wasn't going to be taken seriously. So I respect everyone's opinion.
Thank you, ma'am.
You have the right to your opinion. The timing is-
Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending with six four. Six four, please. Caller with number ending six four, please. Moving on, the next caller will-
Oh, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, ma'am, we can hear you, please.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Please, please, though, put your TV or your watching device or listening device on mute.
Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. We can hear you. Please, please put the volume on your listening device on mute. Ma'am, are you with us? Okay. I suggest, ma'am, that you call back. You're welcome to come back onto the queue. The next caller will have-
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can hear you. Please speak, feel free. Okay. The next caller will have a number ending with nine nine.
Yes, ma'am, I can hear you, please speak, feel free. Okay. The next caller will have a number ending with nine nine.
Caller ending, with number ending with nine nine.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you. Please put your listening device on mute, though, not your phone, the other listening device.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's your, it's your turn, ma'am.
I am a real estate broker in Montclair. I'm a real estate property manager. I own property and I live in Montclair. I have a fifteen-unit apartment building under contract presently, based on no rent control in Montclair. It's always the first question, and that is why we get the best values here in town. I'm obligated now, as a licensed real estate broker, to tell them there is, there will be rent control, so this probably will not be a deal, unfortunately. However, with that said, I think having this meeting now is outrageous and unfair via telephone and by the screen, and due to the crisis that we're living with right now. It's always been, rent control has always been a failed concept. It's an economic evidence that tells us that rent control decreases affordability and just is never a positive thing in the long run. Maybe in the short term it looks good, but it's never, ever been a good thing in the long term, and that's what I have to say. Totally against it, should not happen. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Next caller will have a number ending with one seven. One seven, please.
This is Ryan Simon, Jay, the Montclair Property Owners Association. I think the way that this process has been conducted is clearly a disenfranchising of everyone except for the tenants who were organized and came to you and worked with you, and your obligation wasn't just to say yes to what you heard there based on that argument. It's axiomatic. There was not a true and inclusive dialogue about this. You can hear it in every call. In a few days of exposing what you were doing behind the scenes, which even the tenant advocates indicated in their letters to Barista, you knew your input. Tenant rights and publications, that they bounce the ordinance on the owner's behalf. We didn't, that gives rent control not a problem. And if that's too accepted as a balancing in this ordinance, then that's pretty set really a difficult place for a county to take. I mentioned to a council member that it was not a agenda, I would send a copy of the agenda. I only learned later, the copy that I received was only available the night of the meeting. It's that's an emergency ordinance. You didn't have any right to have that ordinance on without one week's notice. You had no right at all to do that. No one at any of your previous meetings ever said anything you're hearing tonight, and you know it. And that's how we know that none of these property owners and none of these homeowners were invited into this aisle. Now, there's been a rent discussion in Jersey City that's gone on for almost a year, and that discussion included seven different meetings that included experts from across the country on rent control, property owners, tenant advocates, housing advocates. They all came in to talk about it. You had the opportunity to do that, and what did you do instead? And it's just really revealed the cynical nature of this group. You even have a mayor who cannot bring himself to vote on the matter because he recognizes that he doesn't want to own any of this after the fact. None of you do. So if you pass this, you're doubling down on the disparisiveness that this legislative development will clearly engender for whoever's elected mayor. That's your first day in office, whoever's elected mayor, your first day of having disenfranchised the entire time. Because what? You couldn't bear to figure out a way to have organized, to truly reveal the public interest in the matter? That's what you're going to run for mayor on, and that's what you're going to have as your first day? You're completely embarrassing yourself. Now, there were people who raised rents-
Thirty seconds, sir.
But you can legislate that. You can bring court cases for untouchable rent increases, but you shouldn't be punishing the entire market, every homeowner, and ultimately, the physical health of the town because some people are out of line. You should punish those people. And right now, you have available to you the opportunity to pass an emergency ordinance that's truly an emergency ordinance. You could pass a rent freeze until the end of the emergency period. It's already been declared by the government, and no tenant will suffer between now and the time-
Thank you, sir.
It is actually reasonable to hear this ordinance. Now, after thirty years of opposing rent control, I'm pretty cynical, but I actually think that one of the-
The next caller will have a number ending with zero two. Zero two, please.
Hi, my name is Madeline Dale, and I think this time is critical that we do have rent control because people are impacted economically. It's needed here in order to make housing affordable for all. Please understand, without rent control, it would be inhumane. Having no rent control is classist, racist, sexist, ageist, and ableist. Having no rent control hurts poor and working-class people, as well as women, people of color, the elderly, and disabled people, all who generally have less income and resources to pay higher rent prices and increases. Rent control is absolutely necessary and will help keep Montclair diverse and more equitable, and it will help keep people in their homes, and it can save lives, especially at this critical time. And I thank you all for being here at this time, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, ma'am. The next caller will have a number ending with zero zero. Zero zero, please. Caller with number ending with zero zero. Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Stephen Bosker, Irving Park Road, thirty-year resident of Montclair. It was an embarrassment to me that Wisconsin had their primaries today. At least, it was scheduled and a court upheld. For the council to voluntarily act on this tonight is a much greater embarrassment, not just to me, but I think to the public, as you're going to find out if you take any action tonight. Not debating whether we should or should not have rent control, the ordinance is not ready for you even to vote on. There are several provisions that make absolutely no sense. Number one, if an owner of property appeals his pastime and is successful, one hundred percent of the refund goes to his tenant. Number two, the fact that a landlord would have to get a signed letter from a tenant that's leaving the apartment, you know, attested that the landlord acted in good faith. Are you kidding me? This is, that's just not reasonable. And the fact that there's not vacancy control. Some of us landlords have held rents low for certain tenants out of the kindness of our hearts. To now be penalized for that if those tenants leave, that we're not able to charge a market rent, even though we have voluntarily held off rents, is also objectionable. I urge you to not take action tonight. You will be embarrassed if you do, and to give the matter further thought and further consideration. And for the, for the tenant groups that are saying that landlords are included in discussion, I was never included in discussion. I was never invited to participate, and no one sought my input. Thank you for your time and effort. I hope that we have dared to the terms at the present time in acting on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending with eight zero. Eight zero, please. Caller with a number ending in eight zero. Next would be a caller with a number ending with three four. Three four, please.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
I agree with rent control. I've had the privilege of renting and owning. The economy changes over time and unforeseen circumstances occur, such as the current pandemic, which is resulting in death and potential job loss. This topic should be deferred. Emotions are running high. The pandemic has impacted life significantly and unexpectedly. If there is no rent control, it will result in high turnover within rental units. The goal should be to encourage renters to stay and not leave because of a surge in rent. It helps create a stable society. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next caller will have a number ending with five eight. Five eight, please.
Hi, Priscilla Esselman. I've been both a renter and a landlord, and currently I'm a landlord, but this ordinance would not affect me because I own a two-family home. In general, I would support rent control. I know it's something I heard a lot about at meetings I attended over the last three years, and I was certainly sympathetic. My thought right now is our economy is in complete freefall. Unemployment is skyrocketing. There's absolutely no rent in sight. I mean, until there's a vaccine, what is really going to change? We're going to have to rebuild our economy on a scale we haven't attempted since the Great Depression or World War II. I think we should let rents fall to rock bottom and vote on rent control when they start climbing back up. Already, walking around town, I see ample evidence that vacancies are already way up, and no longer are there real estate brokers on. These are buildings that are renting directly, no fees, so the change is already happening. Just like in real estate, they say you should only buy when real estate's going up. You never want to buy on the way down. I think freezing rents now, or, you know, is the wrong move. I also question just the way it's written, that it's going to hurt the people you're trying to help, for example, seniors, and I'm right on that cusp. By making a senior only eligible for a smaller rent increase, that'll make somebody not want to rent to a senior, and that doesn't help seniors. And I question why this isn't tied to a cost of living index, because, again, we have no idea what is going to happen to our economy. I mean, that should give everybody pause right now. I mean, it's, it's absolutely stunning to think that we're trying to predict what rent should be. And I'm concerned that if you institute this, then a lot of landlords will sit on empty apartments, and that also doesn't help. But why would they want to rent at the bottom of the market, knowing that they're not going to be able to raise the rent? Again, when the economy starts to rebound, I'm all for it. I will be part of the la- I will be part of the landlords that say, let's have rent control. And I thought I did somebody had here about having emergency rent freeze. I'm unclear on whether Mercy already declared that or not. That certainly seems appropriate to me.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
I just have to say, you know, I want to believe this was done with the best intentions, and Deirdre, I know you and William Scott have worked so, so hard on the Housing Board to get this to this point. But to be talking about it now with our economy in freefall, it just has to seem like it's being done in the light of the election next month. And I just want to say, it may look really good as a campaign talking point, but I really think it's going to hurt the town and the people you're trying to help by pushing this through now when you don't have a crystal ball. Thanks for considering.
Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending with one four. One four, please. Yes, ma'am, we can hear you. Please put your listening device on mute, though. Not your phone, your listening device.
Again, when the economy starts to rebound, I'm all for it. I will be part of the landlords that say, let's have rent control. And I thought I did somebody had here about that emergency rent freeze. I'm unclear on whether Mercy already declared that or not. That certainly seems appropriate to me.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
And I want to believe that the government is definitely, since Deirdre I know you and William Scott have worked so, so hard on that, to get this to this point. But talking about it now with our economy in freefall, it just has to seem like it's being done in the light of the election next month. And I just want to say, it may look really good as a campaign talking point, but I really think it's going to hurt the town and the people you're trying to help.
Thank you. The next caller will have a number-
You can drop that, Tony.
Four. One four, please.
Ready?
Yes, my name is William Scott. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Scott.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I personally would like to say, thank the Lord for another day. My name is William Scott, resident of Montclair for seventy years. Born and raised in Montclair, four generations. Married, father of two children, living in Montclair. My son is a renter in Montclair, renting one of my rental units. I'm a landlord for thirty-five years in the township of Montclair, and I was never asked to join the Montclair Property Owner Association. The push for rent control in Montclair started, again, in December 2016 in a real talk hosted forum presented by the Montclair Justice Coalition. One of the breakout sessions covered the lack of rent control in Montclair and the high rent in the township, which I conducted. I am William Scott, co-chair of the Montclair Housing Commission and NAACP Housing Committee, along with Councilwoman Bastaville, Steve Cooper of the Ultra Home Loan in New Jersey, Deidre Malloy of the Home Corps, hosted a first-time homebuyers forum in April 2017 with Wally Joyce, Park House in Glenville Park. Which we also covered foreclosure procedures in Montclair, foreclosure problems in Montclair, and the lack of rent control. In November of 2018, I partnered with Planix Civics, an internet web service provider, and did an online survey for rent control, pushing to have a rent control ordinance in the township of Montclair. On the online survey, we provided recommendations that would suit the township of Montclair with a rental ordinance. I also want to thank Javier, Javier Galardo, Senior Editor of Planix Civics. In April, the Universal Rent Control Forum was held in the Charles Fuller School, hosted by Montclair NAACP, Montclair Landlord Tenant Committee, and Montclair Housing Commission, with Councilwoman Bastaville was also the moderator. The property owners, the Montclair Property Owners-
Thirty seconds, sir.
-were invited but declined to participate in the forum. Note, out of that forum, the tenants' organization of Montclair, Tomb, was created by Ahava Sridad and Tony Martin. In February 2020, a rent control forum was facilitated and moderated by Al Calum, the president of the Montclair NAACP, William Scott, Housing Committee Chair, and co-chair of the Montclair Housing Commission. Deidre Malloy, Chair of the tenants' Landlord Committee and co-chair of the Montclair Housing Commission. Leslie Seals, Senior Pastor at St. Luke's-
Thank you, sir. The next caller will have the number ending with nine zero. Nine zero, please.
The next caller will have the number ending with nine zero.
Caller ending nine zero, please.
Caller ending nine zero, please.
Moving on, the next caller will have the number ending with two six. Two six, please.
Hello?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Mike Finer. I work for Affiliated Management, and we manage six properties in town, just shy of 300 apartments. Just to chime in, there's people who have mentioned they wanted to see studies. There's been plenty of studies done in the past about the negative effects of rent control. And the ripple effects that, you know, rent control does reduce property values. In the long term, then, property assessments are lowered, as well as, you know, then down the road, the lower assessments will be lower property tax collection on those buildings. The biggest point that I want to point out is the cap on the vacancy control. The 10%, these older buildings in town require a lot of money to renovate, to bring up to standards. And some of these renovations can cost $30,000 plus. And not only renovate units, but maintaining these older buildings, the cost to maintain is significant. With that being said, we, upon renewal, we're not the landlords that are seeking $100, $150 increases. You know, we're doing two, three percent increases, which we think is fair. And when we renovate units, we then bring them up to market value. So that, bringing the rent up to market once a tenant vacates, helps us to offset some of these costs to maintain the building and keep the properties looking as nice as they do. There's a few other, there was also an article that came out today on the patch about how the landlords just started two weeks ago and formed this organization. That's besides the fact, these arguments would have been made six months ago, a year ago. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The conference has been unlocked.
The next caller will have a number ending with six two. Six two, please.
Hi, this is Charles Gomelli, I'm counsel to the Montclair Property Owners Association, as well as the Committee of Petitioners that is about to inform to challenge any action that you take tonight. Limit my comments to specifics of the rent control ordinance itself. I think my first observation, frankly, is as a former public official, you folks in Montclair are blessed with an incredibly articulate population of residents who are engaged and activated on a very important issue. Some of the comments I've heard tonight, frankly, when you can get a lawyer to say that he couldn't make, he couldn't add anything to it, I'm telling you, I wouldn't bother adding anything to it. They were poignant, they were spot on. And really, how many times do you have to hear from the people that you govern that the leaders should defer action? How many residents do you want to queue up on this phone call to tell you, use some common sense, table this proposal to a time when it's appropriate, when people can focus on it, when they can be part of an intelligent discussion? It's long overdue for that. The reason I know you didn't engage the professional operators of rental property before you teed up this ordinance is because of the ordinance you produced. It was produced by tenant advocates, people who make their living going around the state of New Jersey advocating for rent control, and they teed up the same old sauce that has been rejected in every rent control community that has suffered under rent control. You didn't engage the professional operators. They would have told you what you heard tonight. That is, they don't pass through rent increases that even come close to what you're allowing in this ordinance. They reserve significant rent increases after a long-term tenant has vacated the property and someone from outside of Montclair is moving into the community. That allows an official operator to renovate apartments and make a profit doing it. Table this ordinance. All you're going to do is to promote litigation and division in a community that deserves a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next caller will have the number ending with three six. Three six, please.
Good evening. This is Al Calum, President of the Montclair Branch and NAACP. And I want to thank everybody for being there. What's interesting is, no one on this call knows what the norm would be again. You know, so we have to conduct business, you know, at that point. So the Montclair Branch and NAACP supports the efforts of the Town Council to institute reasonable rent stabilization regulations in Montclair. Under the leadership of the NAACP Affordable Housing Committee Chair, William L. Scott, and the members of the Housing Committee, Deidre Malloy, Kathy Carley, Renee Baskerville, and Freedom McLean, the NAACP has been a leading advocate for affordable housing to protect the residents of Montclair. By fighting for affordable housing, including providing reasonable rent controls, we feel we protect the diversity and the character of Montclair. We urge the Town Council to exercise this effort to put these protections in place that are now desperately needed in these uncertain economic times. In addition, the Montclair Branch wants to thank the Tenant Organization of Montclair, the Montclair Interfaith Clergy Association, and the Montclair African American Clergy Association for all the dedicated and hard work we've forced to finally make the rent control a reality. May God bless everybody, and everybody be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next caller will have the number ending with four six. Four six, please.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for listening. My name is Christopher Rizzo. I'm a property owner, landlord, and business owner in the town of Montclair. As I expressed to you in my email earlier this week, I want to focus my comments not on the ordinance itself, but rather on the process that has led us to this point. It's clear that the council has heard from tenants in Montclair. There's no debate there. But it's equally clear and cannot be debated that the council has not heard from landlords or homeowners in Montclair. By their own admission, the tenant group Tomb stated that landlords have been absent from council meetings where rent control has been discussed. Further proof of this are the very calls you're listening to tonight. Does it reason that people would react so strongly to an ordinance they had known for months was coming? I've spent the last few days speaking with my friends and colleagues, nearly a hundred of Montclarians on this issue, both landlords and single-family homeowners. Universally, literally 100% of these men and women had no idea that a rent control ordinance was even being considered in front of the council, much less that a first reading had already passed. How can these facts not give you pause? How can you feel comfortable passing a law that has far-reaching effects for every resident when you've heard the opinions of only one group? The council is meant to represent the will of the people and the town as a whole. Does Tomb represent the interest and opinion of every Montclarian? Regardless of how you feel about rent control as an issue, the fact is that this is a law with significant ramifications for all Montclair residents. As such, it would be entirely irresponsible to pass a law that affects the entire town without hearing from the entire town, tenants, landlords, and homeowners. Let's also not forget the fact that we are in the midst of a global pandemic. What could possibly be the motivation to pass such significant legislation at this moment in time? What is the rush? What is the point? Montclarians who are choosing to put their families' health first are being penalized by not having the opportunity to participate in this process. As a governing body, moving forward with rent control at this point in time, in light of the facts I just laid out before you, reflects extremely poorly upon the stated goals of the council to be the representatives of the entire town of Montclair. This is not something the voters of the town will soon forget. I urge you to reconsider your intentions. I urge the council to do the right thing and postpone this vote. Thank you very much for your time and your efforts.
Thank you, sir. The next caller will have a number ending with eight eight. Eight eight, please.
Hello, how are you?
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, Town Council, hi. This is Jason Gleason, Executive Director of the Montclair Center FID. As you know, I represent nearly 200 property owners in town, and I want to first say, Bob, the most sincere condolences for your loss, and thank you for your service during the global people tonight. Very appreciated. Though the bid is not inherently against the topic of rent control or stabilization, we do have very strong reservations about the unintended consequences that will inevitably have major impacts on our central business district in Montclair and beyond by passing ordinance O2005. We're urging that the table, that you guys table this vote tonight until further discussions are had from all sides of this argument. Once we've had time to properly digest, communicate, and discuss the topic openly, we believe that an ordinance can be crafted that is better suited for Montclair. Many things are missing here or too loosely defined, and there's no sense in passing this ordinance tonight during one of the most economically devastating and critical times in our history, when a better solution can be come to for all. These are just a few of the problems with the ordinance. The way the ordinance is written will potentially have a cascading effect, putting undue pressure onto our property owners to make up their shortfall, and could form a trickle-down effect, causing commercial rent increases. Commercial rents in our district are already at a premium, and the bid is very concerned that even higher rents could ultimately open an indication for only national retailers to flood the district and destroying the diverse fabric of our downtown retail and culture. Ordinance also does not properly address or define capital improvements. As it stands, we are terribly worried the property owners will not only be incentivized to adequately improve interiors, which will have potentially devastating effects on the appearance of beautiful historic buildings within our district, and ultimately lead to the degradation of quality of life downtown, and this needs to be addressed. As many of you know, there are a significant number of rentals in the district that are currently well below market rates. Most of these dwellings are rented by super, maintenance people, people of color, people with disabilities, and seniors, and these are dwellings that are not rent-controlled already. The passing of this ordinance will leave no protection for these tenants and will cause dramatic rent increases immediately, as owners will be forced to bring their rentals up to market. During this time of local and national crisis, it would be devastating to see these tenant groups squeezed out, especially considering that many of them, many of the owners are now working to provide rent freezes, not increases.
Thirty seconds, sir.
There's a lot missing in this ordinance, and we don't feel that as it stands, this is good for all, nor will ultimately solve the problems that were intended to mend in the first place. Currently, without further nuanced language, the ordinance is equivalent to choosing a blunt instrument where a scalpel is needed. On top of the ordinance itself, the bid also feels that the timing of this vote is both irresponsible and unconscionable. The official ordinance language had only been released March 10, 2020, and as we all know, since this period, most people, property owners and otherwise, have had their concentration solely focused on the global crisis brought on by COVID-19. Why during this incredibly difficult time does this need to be dealt with immediately?
Thank you, sir. The next caller will have the number ending with one five. One five, please. Caller with number ending in one five. Moving on, the next caller will have a number ending with one four. One four, please. Caller with number ending with one four. Moving on again, the next caller will have a number ending with six four. Six four, please. Caller with number ending in six four.
Hello?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi. My name is Raya Zaprina, and I'm a homeowner, and I'm here to oppose the rent control ordinance. I came to the United States, ashamed of being here from a war, from the former Soviet Union. I came here for freedom and dreams that America gives people. I worked hard, and my dream to become a homeowner was achieved, much like a lot of people who is watching this. They worked hard to become proud homeowners. I feel that trying to push rent control is pure dictatorship. I know when I see it because I lived through this back in U.S.A. Just two weeks ago, I found out the pending rent control ordinance. I tried, but I could not find the rent control ordinance online. I had to go to the township clerk and ask for it in the midst of the coronavirus, putting myself and my old mother's health at risk. And now, this is a second reading for this. But then was the first reading? The answer is, this was done in secrecy and conspiracy, this small group of tenants that was pushing their interests. Only after writing to the mayor and council that this is not democratic based to implement rent control ordinance, that nobody knows what is here. Two days ago, they were supposed to get the rent control ordinance online. This ordinance, eighteen percent wrong, portraying landlords as an enemy, that they should go to prison. This is horrifying, that mayor and council would impose this on all residents, the residents that pay taxes and making Montclair as beautiful as it is now. Where is the justice? This is dictatorship. Four landlords, two, three family houses would not survive with high taxes as it is now. They could not do any improvement. Rent control will reduce incentive for rental property owners to maintain or improve or build properties. The result is decline of one beautiful property and urban life. Landlords would be forced to make condominiums and also transfer multihouses to rental houses to sell.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
This would lead to dramatically reducing number of renters, even in Bluefield landlords that have less than six units buildings exempt from rent control. The reduction of new construction and improvement will limit the source of increased revenue and the number of affordable rentals. And this rent control ordinance will transact that obligation on the single-family houses and condos. Plus, additional layer of bureaucracy is creating full-time restrictions, rent regulation mechanisms to increase our taxes even more.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's what you have in Mont-
The next caller will have a number ending with nine zero. Nine zero, please.
Thank you, ma'am. The next caller will have a number ending with nine zero. Nine zero, please.
Caller with number ending with nine zero. Moving on, the next caller will have a number ending with zero two. Zero two, please.
Good evening. This is Leslie Houseworth Fields, resident of Montclair and pastor of St. Mark's United Methodist Church. I support rent control in Montclair, and I've heard many people tonight discuss or express their disagreement about enhanced handling important business at tonight's meeting. The concern is that we are in the midst of a pandemic, but to quote one of my clergy colleagues, "If this is not the right time to create a more equal and compassionate society, then we must admit that there is no appropriate time." This ordinance is doubly just and necessary during this time. There has been much talk in recent weeks celebrating the work of our heroes, frontline medical workers and service personnel. Are they only heroes as long as they are not also tenants? Friends, yes, we are in a pandemic, but as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The time is always right to do what is right." Members of the council, I urge you to do what is right, protect the diversity and character of Montclair, and vote yes on rent control. Thank you for your time and be safe.
Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending with one eight. One eight, please.
I think that, um, I think that there is a type of rent control or stabilization that could work and probably should work, but I don't know if this ordinance is right, and I don't think it should be rushed into like this. Is it possible to get a question answered about this ordinance at this time, or is this not the right forum for that?
Certainly, you can ask, excuse me, ask a question.
Ma'am, you may ask a question, of course, but what we do is we ask you to turn your listening device to mute so you listen on the phone.
Okay. Um, hmm, trying to figure out how to do that. Um... Okay. Um, I, does an individual or single unit condominium, so if an investor or a person bought a condominium and chose, they didn't want to live there any longer and wanted to rent it out, is that single unit part of this ordinance?
Uh, no, this is Ira-
Identify yourself.
Oh, yeah. This is Ira Karasik, I'm the township attorney. Uh, no, that single unit would not be covered by the ordinance unless that owner owned more condominiums. The owner of a single condominium unit would not be covered.
Did you have any further questions or comments, ma'am?
Well, what number, what number of condominiums is the limit before that landlord is subject to these controls?
It's the same as the number of uni, it's the same as the number of units in the building, four or more. Did you get that? I'm sorry, it's...
Do you listen on the phone?
All right, thank you, thank you for that clarification, but I do want to go back and say one thing. Um, I, I think there, believe me, I, I understand the reasons for stabilizing rents, but I don't think that, I'm a senior citizen, and I don't think that seniors necessarily should be, have their increases restricted. I mean, that's going to cause other problems.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
That means a landlord's not going to want to rent to seniors? This, it, it, there are certain things that are wrong with the ordinance, not that the whole thing is wrong, but there are certain things that don't make sense, and, and don't make sense. And, and one woman who spoke, who said that doing something like this right now before we see what the world looks like, what the economy looks like after this, and a couple of other people have said that, we know we're not going to live in the same world. And we don't know, many of us have lost tremendous amounts of retirement savings, 401K savings, whatever it all may be.
Thank you, ma'am.
We are going to be living-
Thank you for your comments. The next caller will have a number ending with seven eight. Seven eight, please. Caller with a number ending with seven eight?
Yeah, hi. Um, I'm a professional owner in Montclair, and I represent, I'm a very landlord, although I have represented the town, the town with rent control matters. Um, I, I think it's important to recognize that these people are really a very diverse world, absolutely. I mean, if you're going to consider, you know, rent control, you're going from a situation with zero rent control, total rent control.
Sir, I beg your pardon, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we can't-
There's a whole lot-
Sir?
You know, there's a whole lot-
Mr. Fan, would you, would you drop the caller?
Don't drop him, just-
Sir, I'm sorry, we were unable to hear you. That was caller with the number ending in seven eight. Would you do us the service, please, of calling back? The queue remains open. We're sorry for the bad connection, and we will certainly take your call if you, if you call us back. I apologize for that technical difficulty. The next caller will have a number ending with four zero. Four zero, please.
Hi, you can hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Hi, thank you. My name is Will Heskey. I am a resident and property owner in town. I'd like to first start off pointing out that we've obviously experienced a number of technical difficulties, we cannot on the phone hear any of the board, the microphones do not connect to the laptop, do not connect to the phone, even on the online stream, can't hear you. But point of order here that the, uh, that this ordinance was originally introduced on March 10th, and even as the clerk were editing to the record this afternoon, it was pointed out that the borough municipality buildings were closed since the 15th, and this was posted online, I believe it was this week, with different versions of the agenda. So I think it's a correct process to be voting on this issue tonight. Uh, all things considered, I am against the introduction of rent control, specifically the way this one is written. There's a number of structural issues, as well as the findings do not seem to mention that there are, by my count, um, just shy of 2,000 apartments coming online in the marketplace due to the various developments that you see up and down Bloomfield Avenue and throughout. I think that it is a structural flaw in this ordinance to not have any caps indexed to an inflation or cost of living. Um, we've heard a number of comments about the, excuse me, the capital improvements and how, um, they neither match the IRS rules for capital improvements or the actual practical requirements of owning and operating a building. There's other items in here, for example, management fees. You're not going to find someone to manage your building for 6%. This is just, there's a number of structural issues here, um, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. The next caller will have a number ending with the digits seven nine. Seven nine, please. Caller with a number ending in seven nine?
Hello, I'm here, hello?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Peace and blessings to everyone, praying that everyone is doing their best to stay safe, you know, offering my prayers and condolences to those who have lost loved ones and friends. Um, with, with that being said, and being sensitive to the current pandemic, this is of course the right time to have this conversation. Longtime residents born and raised, still living in Montclair, have seen a lot change, not opposed to that, but I'm opposed to things being done unfairly. What's been done unfairly has been pricing residents of different socioeconomic backgrounds, color, and everything else out of Montclair to newcomers. All newcomers are welcome with the idea that Montclair was built on a set amount of values maintained by those who still live here and those who were here before us. We want Montclair to be a place that is diverse. We want Montclair to be a place that is representative of everyone. And the fact that I've heard for the last hour, many people stating that this was last minute, by no means has it been, has it been last minute. This has been spoken about for the last few years. What happened is they didn't realize there would be an ordinance. They thought it would never happen in Montclair. Trust me, I've been a part of and have witnessed many conversations and many attitudes of people who thought because of all the overdevelopment, this would never happen. Well, guess what? It's happening, and it needs to happen. And oh, by the way, I'm not a renter, so to speak. I represent my family, who are landlords in Montclair, who are senior citizens, who worry about how they're going to pay these high taxes, but yet have a heart for the people. They have a heart for the people and have never and ever overcharged people for rent. You know why? Because not only do most places, you have to, um, pay for rent, but most places you have to pay your own utilities. My family has never charged more than so because they want people to be able to afford to live here with their family. The same way my parents were able to, while they were living in Montclair, save, bought their home, and as part of their rental property, they rent to people and they give people a chance. Why? Because we want to see the diversity of Montclair, and we want people to be able to live comfortable and not restrained. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next caller will have a number ending in four six. Four six, please.
Good evening, and thank you for taking my call. Mayor Jackson, thank you for unlocking the call. There is a lag in your live meeting feed and the YouTube feed, and I was locked out when I called in over an hour ago. Again, thank you for unlocking the call so I can participate. My guess is there's a lot of callers who cannot participate in the call today due to technical difficulties such as the time lag or other audio difficulties. Also, I could not hear any of the council members during the call. My name is Matt Horrigan, and a resident in town for 12 years, and I own a small, eight-family apartment building. I know this council, I know this council heard from a very small group of very organized, very organized and very loud rent control proponents, and this council did not afford landlords or homeowners all this evening. Shame on this council for not running eight and allowing all stakeholders to be heard and participate in the process. Furthermore, this call is riffed with technical difficulties and should have been stopped before it started. I've heard the rent control proponents complain and complain over and over about how awful landlords are in town. This is just not true and accurate. This council would know this if it solicited input from landlords and homeowners. This council must allow the landlords the opportunity to be heard in a democratic manner and solicit our input. I'm a fair landlord and not, and have not raised rents aggressively. All of my tenants, albeit only eight, have lived in my building for between eight, four to six years. I know my tenants personally and they know me. In conclusion, this council must allow all stakeholders to be heard and not just, not just the rent control proponents. Again, thank you for taking my call, and I wish everyone on the call the best during these terribly trying- I wish everyone on the call the best during these terribly trying times. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next caller will have a number ending in nine eight. Nine eight, please.
Hi, this is Margaret Sipe, Peg Sipe. My husband, Tony Schuman, and I have been homeowners in Montclair for almost 25 years. We've raised our family here. The first thing I want to do is thank the council for your respect, for democracy, and for your work in carrying this important consideration forward. And I especially, especially thank the council members and staff who are there in person. The rent control, or rent stabilization ordinance is a very fair one. It's been in the works publicly for a number of years. We've been working toward this for 30 years in Montclair, even before I lived here. We urge you to do the right thing. Our town will still be beautiful, but it will also be fair and inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next caller will have a number ending in zero one. Zero one, please.
Hi, this is Rabbi Elliot Tefferman. I'm the rabbi at the Nantucket in Montclair, New Jersey, and the past president of the Montclair Property Association. I want to mention that while many have spoken about this being a challenging time to address this, I want to note that part of the reason it's challenging is because many of the people who are most directly impacted by this ordinance are not able to attend as they are working hard to maintain just the simple, uh, the work of their families and the work that they need to do to continue their job. I want to note, as previous callers noted, that this is an effective rent control ordinance that is based on similar ordinances throughout the state, throughout the country, throughout our county, that have all gone into effect with little negative effect or none at all, and with very positive effect. It is a fair ordinance. It's fair to landlords and it's fair to tenants, and it allows for reasonable rent increases under reasonable circumstances. As a rabbi in Montclair, I have seen people having to move out of town because of lack of affordable housing. I have seen children who grew up in my synagogue unable to move back to town because of affordable housing. Montclair will not be able to maintain its racial or economic diversity without using every means at its disposal to maintain affordable housing. This ordinance is an important step. I urge the council to move forward with it. This is precisely the right time. You are our democratically elected leaders. This is the democratic process. I appreciate you listening to us, and I urge you to move forward supporting this ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending in seven eight. Seven eight, please.
Mayor and members of the council, thank you so much for your service tonight and this year, and for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Andy, Andy Cohen. I've been an owner in town for 20 years, provide decent income housing in town. And this ordinance should not be rushed through, the rent control ordinance, without more comments from homeowners who are going to end up carrying the tax burden, which it does go through, and from other landlords. It takes, as the rabbi before me just said, it takes elements of other rent control ordinances in the area. It seems to mimic Newark rent control ordinance. I'm not sure why Montclair would want to do that. It has not worked out well for Newark. I don't know why Montclair wants to take some of the worst regulations from Newark and impose them in Montclair, especially the 10% vacancy increase. That's going to depress the value of apartment buildings in town and shift the tax burden onto single-family homeowners. And I, most homeowners I know in town don't even know this is happening. So this should not be rushed through. It should be considered more slowly and let other people in the rest of the town give their input. But to do this at a meeting that's barely open to the public is, I think, is not the democratic way to do it. So, please, I'm asking you to put this on hold, reconsider certain elements of it, and not pass it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending with seven four. Seven four, please.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. Uh, you know, a few callers ago, there was a nice Russian lady who was talking about, you know, coming over from USSR and democracy and what she's here for. And my biggest issue isn't with the ordinance itself, it's with how this ordinance is being passed and not being able to have a forum with everyone's presence and presenting their ideas, good or bad, at least having the opportunity to hear each other and come to something, come to an agreement that works for everybody. I think that doing this now during a global pandemic is absolutely wrong, and not allowing everybody to have their own voice heard is wrong. And, you know, if two blond surfer guys can go into the LA or Santa Monica boards and present about a statue for Paul Walker, I mean, come on. We're talking about rent control, it's a major issue, and you can't hear half the people on the call. You can't hear responses from people. I mean, if those guys can present on something that is completely and utterly ridiculous, I think something this serious should be taken that way and addressed appropriately. And I thank you for your time and wish everyone health and safety during this time.
Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending with nine four. Nine four, please.
Yes, I am caller ending with nine four. Are you able to hear me clearly?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Excellent. This is a hava of the tenants' organization of Montclair. Great to be on call. And for the people who said you didn't hear from them, we didn't hear from you because you were asleep for over 11 months. Did you think this was not serious? Your nearly 100 friends does not light a candle to the thousands of the tenants' organization of Montclair, um, our representation. And yes, Mr. Russo, to represent everyone, everyone who's had an unconscionable rent increase here in Montclair. The rush is because your landlord friends and possible colleagues are still raising rent, yes, at this time. Right on Ford Street last week, 1425 to 1650, do you know who that is? And that's the real deal. And why? Jason Gleason. Would, if you don't believe in rent control, would you and your friends reach out to me to help you get rent control for commercial property in Montclair? God bless my landlords. Did you think I would crumble? That was shady and disrespectful. I see that very clearly now, and I'm still honored, because this is going to get done. I told you and your friends that my involvement in this movement is to fulfill the wishes of my late mother, the Mrs. Mary Ann Claremont, one of the core founding members of HomeCorps. And I will not stop until this is done. Now, we too, and beyond, feel that the ordinance is workable. It's fair, especially during this time. This is month 11 since we started, headed to month 12. We appreciate the council's vote for rent control in Montclair. God bless you. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending in eight two. Eight two, please.
Hello, ma'am?
Yes, sir, you are. We ask, though, that you mute your listening device other than your phone, because there is a natural lag or delay between the call and the broadcast.
I just did that.
Thank you, sir. Please, go ahead.
I just want to say that I find that-
Sir, are you still with us? Sir?
I'm muted.
Caller ending with eight two, please. Can you hear me, sir? All right, we apologize for that, sir. If you call us back, you could certainly get on the end of the queue. There are other callers on the line, so we are keeping the meeting open for that purpose. The next caller will be with a number ending in four three. Four three, please.
Yes, mayor and council, just making sure that you can hear me?
We can hear you, sir.
Thank you for taking my call, and thank you for providing us the opportunity to speak. My name is Anthony Laurel. I'm the manager of apartment buildings in town of Montclair. I apologize if I repeat some of the things that were said this evening, because it really just keeps going back and forth, and sometimes you hear people, sometimes you don't. So I don't necessarily believe that this is the best forum in which to have this discussion. A lot of people have stated that this is the right time for this discussion. There's a right time for any discussion, but it has to be a discussion, and a discussion involves several parties. Right down the road, a few years ago, I was involved in a process down in Bloomfield, sent that process. And I was part of that process that had landlords and tenants and mayor and council and everybody speak in the same room and talk about the same subjects and decide what was best for everyone. That simply just has not happened here. Regardless of the fact that maybe, you know, we were not advised of, or we were, we just ignored it, I'm not sure that matters. What matters is, there should be a discussion. I think there's landlords in town, you know, some that have been in business for over 40, 50 years, that can provide a lot of input on how this is going to impact the community. And I think that's something that mayor and council should consider. Um, you know, one of the things that I think one of, one of the speakers had mentioned something about the vacancy decontrol and the improvements that are tried to be done with, with some of the turnovers. You know, code upgrades, simple code upgrades alone are going to be in excess of a 10% rent increase. So I'm not sure that something like that is something that should be part of the discussion. I also remember back down in Bloomfield, it was a similar type ordinance to also what was done down in Newark. And, uh, and that was one of the reasons why this discussion even happened down there, was because there was a fear of what would happen with the impact of such an ordinance. Um, the, you know, I believe everything has been said in the past. I honestly don't know how this can go to a vote tonight, considering what has been said by the many callers that have called in just regarding the process. I know for one, I would not-
Thirty seconds, sir.
-want to have this on my plate if I was a council member moving forward. I think the better move, as opposed to a vote, is to have a discussion and do it the right way, not have a vote now and face what is likely to be ahead. Thank you for taking my call.
Thank you, sir. The next caller will have a number ending with five two. Five two, please. Caller with a number ending in five two? Again, caller with a number ending in five two? Okay, moving on. The next caller will be with a number ending in one four. One four, please. Caller with a number ending in one four? Caller with a number ending in one four? Okay, moving on. The next caller will be a caller with a number ending in two two. Double two, please.
Yeah, hello.
Good evening.
I'd just like to let everyone know, I'm a realtor in town for the last 20 years, and I also am a landlord, as well as a property manager. And I think the major point of this whole discussion is that it really hurts the town of Montclair to pass this ordinance in its fullest, only because property values are determined by the rent, especially in units that are poor and up. And if you limit the rent, especially from a vacancy standpoint, I believe once a property becomes vacant, you should really let the public determine what the rent is, rather than you setting a limit on it. And you end up penalizing the nice landlords who have kept their rents low over these years. And these poor landlords that have done this now have to face up to the fact that their buildings are not worth what their neighbors' buildings are worth, because their neighbors were raising rents over the years. Your four and a half or four and a quarter percent increase is in line with most of the other towns. But even in New York City, which has the strictest of all rent control, does not allow a vacancy to go unless it's market rent. So your proponent of having a 10% increase over a rent that hasn't been raised in the last 10, 20 years is really unfair to that particular landlord. And the loss of value will only create a tax burden on the single-family and two-family homeowner, because we know the tax base has to be a certain number, and you're going to have to be set with a lot of tax appeals. I thank you for your time this evening, and I wish everybody a very safe evening, and that we get through this pandemic in good shape. Good night.
Thank you, sir. The next caller will have a number ending with nine zero. Nine zero, please. Caller with a number ending in nine zero?
Yes, uh, this is James Howard. Uh, I am a property, uh, I am a property owner in Montclair, and I am in favor of rent control in Montclair. I do appreciate the fact that the council is operating on duress, and I do agree with Lincoln and Sharon Turner that this really should be withheld, given the crisis that we have in town. However, whenever the rent disordinance is to be considered, this really is about maintaining diversity in Montclair. We're talking about diversity of social and economic diversity. Yes, I don't know of very many property owners who are losing money, so the rent controls that have been proposed are reasonable, and it would make rent predictable. It is totally unfair for people to be confronted with uncontrolled and outrageous increases. All one has to do is to look at the racial diversity of Montclair, and it would be clear that some people are being forced out of this town. The sad part about it is that for folks who are on, uh, limited income, uh, some of the children who have gone to school, gone away, and come back cannot afford to live in the town that they have so much pride in. Uh, it's never, uh, it's not, just, it's not- It's never, it's not unheard of that people who are in the position of resources have opposition to people becoming equitable. All one has to do, if you want to really maintain the diversity in this town, is take a look at the inequalities that have occurred over the recent years. I am in favor of people making it reasonable return on their investment, but I believe that it's possible in Montclair to make a reasonable return on the investment while being fair to people who have a strong desire to be in this town, who have lived in this town, and who have been here over the years. So, I am totally in support of rent control in Montclair. It's the right thing to do, it's the right time to do it, and I hope the council will have the courage to do the right thing and not be totally influenced by people of wealth and resources at the expense of people who are lacking resources. Thank you for your attention, and by all means, I pray for your safe, safety and health.
Thank you, sir. The next caller will end with a number five-five. Five-five, please.
Hi, I have a few questions first. What is the minimum number of units that will be affected by this? If a property has eight units, I think I heard, is this right?
Yeah, hi, this is Ira Karasik, Township Attorney. It's four or more, buildings with four or more residential units, multiple dwellings with four or more.
Somebody is speaking and I cannot hear them.
Multiple dwellings with four or more residential units are covered by the ordinance. Buildings with less than that are not covered.
Yeah, it's really awful, I cannot hear, it sounds really muffled.
Mr. Fan, can you say four or more?
Can somebody else repeat that?
Yes, sir. The answer to your question is, buildings with four or more units, the ordinance is applicable to.
Great, and allowed rent increase? If the tenant is still there, it's classified, I understand?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that question, sir?
What is the allowed rent increase?
I believe the question is, when is there allowed a rent increase?
There's, excuse me?
What is the?
Yeah, I know, it's on. There's a, this again, Ira Karasik. Maximum permissible annual rent increase is 4.25%, except in the case where there's a person sixty-five years or older in the apartment, where the maximum annual increase is 2.5%. Did you get that?
And between, and what if the unit is renovated, is there more of a rent increase?
Well, they're all provisions dealing.
Somebody renovates the tenants, can they increase the rent more?
There are provisions dealing with capital improvements, but those, no, the answer is that those are the permitted increases. If you want to get an increase based upon improvements, then that's another procedure.
Okay, well, it sounds like there are some problems with these increased numbers in there, it sounds very static, and the government just rented, what, $2 trillion, which we don't know how much is going to increase inflation, but during this crisis, inflation could certainly rise.
Thirty seconds, sir.
And as the inflation rises, if the percentage increase does not keep up with inflation, that could cause for major problems. Am I correct?
Can you repeat the question?
Right, everybody agrees?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question, please?
If the number doesn't keep up with inflation, then this number is incorrect and needs to be changed?
I mean, these are the numbers in this ordinance, they're not subject to cost of living or inflation. The way this ordinance is written.
That's a problem, right? We can agree that this is a problem in this ordinance?
Well, I'm not going to speculate.
So, also, we could agree that it's a problem for those who are most at risk if somebody sets the rate, the rent of the new property very high, because they can't raise the rent later, so this will cause more gentrification. One thing we're trying to do is keep diversity in Montclair, and this will cause less diversity in Montclair, because it will cause more gentrification. Studies have shown that rent control does not reduce gentrification.
Thank you, sir. The next caller will have a number ending in one-five. One-five, please. Caller with the number ending in one-five? Nope. Moving on. The next caller will have a number ending in six-zero. Six-zero, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes, sir.
Hi, I just wanted to say that Montclair citizens should all have a voice in this vote, and this should be a ballot box question for the entire town, and it shouldn't be the vote of a town council. Over the last fifty years, Montclair has voted repeatedly against rent control, and during a time like this, we shouldn't be enacting an ordinance that would affect so many within the town. Forty percent of the people that support this do not represent 100% of the residents in Montclair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next caller will have a number ending with zero-seven. Zero-seven, please. Caller with the number ending in zero-seven? Caller with the number ending in zero-seven? Moving on, then. The next caller will have a number ending with four-six. Four-six, please.
Hi, my name is Noemi Gishbent. I am one of the few people who have grown up in Montclair and been able to move back to Montclair. And I want to speak in support of rent control.
Are you still with us, ma'am? Oh, yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Yes, I got muted in the middle of that. I just wanted to say that there are certain markets that work well without intervention, but housing is not one of them. It really needs to be intervened in, because if you just leave it to the highest bidder, the results are fairly predictable. And so, I don't think that a market solution is right for housing. And I don't know all of the details of this rent control measure, but from looking at it, it seems like it allows a fair amount of rent increases, as well as profit is built into the formula. So, I don't see that it's going to make a lot of harm, and yet it will serve the benefits of having people be able to live here, who maybe grew up here, or maybe need to work here, because we need a diversity of different jobs that are being sold within the city. Not everybody can have a really fancy, high-paying job. So, that's all, thank you, and be safe.
Thank you. The next number will have, the next caller, I beg your pardon, will have a number ending in six-two. Six-two, please. Caller with the number ending in six-two, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Wonderful, thank you. Thanks to the council, the council, yeah, right, the council for holding this meeting during this very difficult time that we're all having. My name is Bonnie Cushing, I've been a property owner in Montclair for over thirty years. And I'm calling to urge the council to approve and to pass this ordinance. Montclair, what makes Montclair great, what made me and my family move to Montclair, for me to raise my children here, was the diversity, was that Montclair was both liberal and progressive. But progressives need to be acted upon, and if we are truly to be a progressive community, we need to pass this ordinance. Thank you, and please stay safe.
Thank you, ma'am. The next caller will have a number ending with seven-eight. Seven-eight, please.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
We can, sir.
Hi, I am a new homeowner in Montclair. I didn't hear about this ordinance being passed until a couple days ago, so I'm personally a little terrified, especially with the whole coronavirus thing going on. Like I said, this is my first home in Montclair. Montclair's attracted me because of its beauty, its diversity, and unfortunately, because of Corona, I lost my job. And the only reason I'm able to keep on making my mortgage payments is because of my tenants, and I do live at the house as well, so I am paying as well. But if this, I'm terrified that this will restrict me too much, that this ordinance will restrict me too much. So, I know I'm not a large body of the town, being a first homeowner, but I just needed to get my voice heard. Thank you, and please be safe.
Thank you, sir, and to you. The next caller will have a number ending in five-two. Five-two, please. Oh, okay, that caller hung up. The next caller will have a number ending in zero-zero. Double-zero, please. Caller ending with double-zero? Caller ending in zero-zero? Okay, moving on. The next caller will have a number ending with one-four. One-four, please. Caller ending with one-four? Caller ending with one-four? Moving on to our next caller, with a number ending in five-five. Caller ending in five-five, please.
Hi, it seems that a lot of people don't understand specifics of this ordinance. Does that mean we should hold off until most people get a chance to look at it?
We've heard your question, do you have anything else to say, sir?
No, I just wanted to get more details.
Do you have any specific questions or comments, sir?
I guess I just was hoping that this would work over the course of months, so we could iron out the details and change them, rather than push a bill tonight that many people seem to misunderstand completely.
All right, we thank you for calling.
Hello?
We can hear you, did you have anything else to say, sir? All right, thank you for calling. The next caller will have a number ending in zero-seven. Zero-seven, please. Caller ending in zero-seven? Caller ending in zero-seven? All right, moving along. Caller ending in one-five, please. One-five. Caller with a number ending in one-five, you're up next.
Hi, this is Tony Martin.
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Tony Martin, fine.
This is Tony Martin of the Tenants Organization of Montclair. Goodness, there's been a lot of name-calling and shaming and et cetera tonight, but I also have heard a lot of caring. And that's why we began working on this issue, a group of us, after we attended a very public forum more than a year ago, on the issue. We know that landlords have a perfect right to earn a living. We are an important part of our community, and so are tenants. Tenants are residents of Montclair. All this ordinance, designed very carefully and thought about by council members extensively, I know, because I've been listening to you. What this ordinance does is not steal money from landlords, it stabilizes the economic situation for tenants, who can know what they owe going forward, at least to an extent. Right now, there are no constraints. And the fact of the matter is, that has meant that my neighbors, your neighbors, our residents of Montclair, many of them have been forced to leave. It's heartbreaking to me, it should be heartbreaking to anyone, that residents who chose this community, that love this community, that have contributed to this community, have been forced to leave because of abrupt precipitous rent increases. This is, you know, key to very rapid development, which has had deleterious effects on a certain part of the community. And that would be the less affluent, those who must rent their homes, or choose to rent their homes, as opposed to owning. I had been a homeowner.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
I had spent my life being a landlord. But now, I feel that the most important thing that can happen democratically tonight is that you listen to the tenants who have, yes, organized, that's not a bad word, we have organized to get you here, to work out an ordinance that is fair. And I thank you in advance for your approval.
Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending in zero-zero. Zero-zero, please.
This is Eric Scherzwick, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
I've been a longtime resident of Montclair, lived here for thirty-four years. I owned a single-family house, and now I own condominium, and I am a strong supporter of this ordinance. I've seen how the town has changed over that time period. Many people that I know have been forced out of town by rapidly rising rents, and the ordinance calls for a reasonable increase. It doesn't call for a rent freeze, it calls for a reasonable increase that will allow current residents to continue to live here. And if we want to keep the town as diverse as it has been, it's already changed a lot, and if we want to keep it with some semblance of a diverse community, then I urge you to support this ordinance and vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next caller will have a number ending in eight-two. Eight-two, please. Caller with the number ending in eight-two? Caller with the number ending in eight-two? Do we have another caller sir? Mayor, we appear to have exhausted the list, although the queue remains open, so I will let you know if someone else calls in. The next caller will be the caller with the number ending in one three. One three please.
Yes, good evening. I just have one quick question. With the town redoing their evaluation, reevaluation, how can the council justify the large increase in taxes to put through something like this? It's more of a question than it is a statement. I don't know who can answer this, but it's, you know, we took a huge increase in the taxes, and with only a 4% increase on this new proposal, it just doesn't equal. That's just a statement. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Mr. Fan, are there any other?
If I may, I just wanted to comment on that comment. One, there has not been a reevaluation of town property. I think we did it in 20, what is it, 2017, I think it was, 2017. And at least on the municipal side, there hasn't been a tax increase for two years. So I'm not sure where that comment comes from, but for the record, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. I just have one quick question.
The next caller will have a number ending in eight two. Eight two please. Ma'am, are you there? Caller with the number ending in eight two? All right, moving along. The next caller will have a number ending in one four. One four please.
Yes, this is William Scott. I've been cut off a couple of times. I just wanted to make sure that I got my voice in to say I do support the rent control ordinance. This has been going on for a long time, as far as the dialogue in the community square. Any landlord that did not know what was going on, did not have a connection to the community, that's very clear and very simple. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands, even using the call-in boxes, yeah, it's been difficult, but this is the time to get it done. We're going through some very difficult times in our country. Protection for tenants is going to be extremely important moving forward. So again, William Scott, I do support the rent control ordinance that's on the table. Thank you.
Thank you sir. The next caller will have a number ending in six four. Six four please.
Hello?
Yes ma'am, we can hear you.
Hello? Hi. Yeah, so I have a concern that this is actually not going to be helpful to the people trying to help, which is the tenants, our renters. And not just because, I worry that with such intense regulations being placed on landlords, they may decide this is not worth it for them, so they don't want to either own in the area anymore, still try to sell, and then landlords will have to come in, and we'll have a whole other host of problems. Or else they'll decide they don't want to improve the properties. And so the tenants will be suffering because now their properties are not being maintained and kept up to standard and all of that. So can you guarantee that this is actually going to be helping to the renters? Can you show me in other locations where this has actually worked and has made renters be able to stay in their housing and still enjoy the quality of life that they've always wanted to have? Because I've read many studies that show that rent control is very, very serious to the areas implemented in, and I worry that that is going to be happening in Montclair, that it's actually going to negatively impact everybody across the board, not just the, you know, landlords of multi-property dwellings, but also everybody else who lives here, including the renters who are trying to help now. So please speak to that, and, you know, make this a discussion where everybody can participate, ask questions, answer the questions for them, and not have all these technical issues. You know, I called, I tried to call 14 times, and I kept getting thrown off. And so this is not the kind of discussion we should be having about something that's so important for everybody who's involved. So I thank you for your time, and I appreciate, you know, all your thoughtfulness in trying to put this together, and to try to get everybody on the same page with this meeting. But I think this is not enough, I think we need more. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller will have a number ending in eight two. Eight two please.
Yes, I want to talk.
Go ahead sir, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you sir, yes sir.
Yeah, this is Mitch Khan, New Jersey Tenants Organization. I've spoken to you a number of times over the last several meetings or so. This, as you know, has been going on for over a year now in Montclair. And this idea that this is something that just fell out of the sky is nonsense. People in Montclair, including the landlords who have been calling in tonight, have had plenty of time to respond. This ordinance is more than fair to the landlords. It gives them a generous rent increase, a generous capital improvement surcharge, it gives them a tax surcharge, and it gives them a fair hardship formula. There's absolutely, should be absolutely no complaints. This idea that this is going to lead to increased taxes for homeowners is absolute nonsense, and it's sheer scare tactics on part of the landlords. So I really urge you, you know, in the interest of keeping Montclair a very, very nice diverse town, to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Mayor, it appears as if we've exhausted the queue, although it remains open at this point. Would you like me to end the queue?
Yeah, hearing no, seeing no else in the queue, I'm going to close the public hearing on this.
The conference has been locked.
On this hearing, and now open it up to council comments. Members of the council wishing to make comments?
Can anyone hear me?
We can sir.
Councilman Russo?
We can hear you councilman.
Okay, I just want to thank everybody for your condolences and expression of wishes, but I'm on for three hours now, listening to every single comment. I spent the three hours shutting myself away from family that needed me to listen to every single landlord, every single comment from homeowners and tenants. I've read every single email that's being sent today, the last few days have been hard for me, but I've read everything and I've responded. As you all know, you've gotten response from me to every single email. Now this is nothing new. Been going on for 20 years, since I was mayor, 20 years ago. This is an issue that's very difficult, I appreciate a lot of the landlord concerns. I do not understand why there's so much hostility to this ordinance that is a moderate compromise ordinance. I personally would have wanted even a lower increase in rent to be a cap, but that's not what we have. We have an ordinance that was fashioned by everybody's working together, and it's been proposed by the tenants for a very, very long time. You know, I always look back, I look back at Teddy Roosevelt, that's my hero. Teddy Roosevelt, Republican president, 1902, had to fight to help those who were workers in the mines against the owners of the mines. And all he asked for is that they have some accountability to the government. We're not asking for something that's onerous. Every town in the area has this. Every town in the area that I've talked to said it works, that the tenants know what they may have to pay, that the landlords know what they may have to raise rents to. They don't have tenants and people coming to every council meeting with complaints that the mayor last year had to intervene. I had to intervene, we had to ask a landlord to not increase rents by 50%. We have a landlord-tenant board that doesn't have any teeth right now. This will be a board that has the ability to hear complaints, to hear requests from landlords, to settle things without people coming every meeting to the council begging us for help. This is a long time coming. I hear the cries of the tenants, I hear the complaints of the landlords. When will there be a better time, as Reverend Housewood feels? We have a terrible pandemic, I just lost my mother, could have something to do with that, but I'm here listening, and I've heard nothing tonight that changes my mind from what I voted a month ago. I respect all the landlords who spoke, I'm very close friends with many people like Sharon Turner, I understand the reservations of people to be doing this during this pandemic. We've had a very tough night here of communicating, but we cannot shut down our government and not do what's right. So I am going to continue to vote yes. This is not a totally satisfactory ordinance to me. Many tenants have complained to me it's too generous for landlords. But I think that what we do in our country is we pass laws, and then we have the ability to amend them, the constitutional express to amend, even the constitution. If we find that this doesn't work, that it's too onerous, that it doesn't satisfy the needs that we're trying to address tonight, we can amend it. So I hope you, as landlords, hear what I'm saying. We can review this in the future, make changes, make improvements, hear you out again, and we've heard you tonight. Unfortunately, we have this pandemic making it hard to communicate, but I believe I've heard everybody's comments. I listened very carefully for three hours, and I intend to continue to vote to pass this ordinance, because it's the right thing to do, to keep Montclair affordable, diverse, and prosperous. Thank you.
Other council members comment?
Yes, this is Rob Schager.
We hear you.
Okay, thank you. I, um, thank you Bob, for your comments and my sincere condolences to you and your family on the loss of your beloved mother. I want to, I also want to reiterate what Bob said. I too have spent the last five, six days answering and reading every single email that I got. And what I do, and what I've always done as a council person, is balance the emails. And for every two, every two emails that I got in support, two or three emails I've got in support of this ordinance, I got one that was against it. So that's how I usually look at what's good for the greater good of our town. I want to bring to people's attention our surrounding neighborhoods. Caldwell has a 2 and 3/4% cap on their increases. Maplewood, 2 and 1/2%. Verona, Bluefield, West Orange has 3%. Our ordinance, this ordinance, is 4.25%, which I think is totally fair, obviously totally higher than our surrounding neighbors. I understand that many people feel that the timing of putting this ordinance to a vote might not be the right time, but the vote is here, it's this evening. Given the timing, people losing their jobs, I've lost my job, I, two weeks ago, I'm unemployed. That there's an economic downfall, that it is the right time, more than ever, to vote on this, on this ordinance tonight. For almost a year, we have heard some tenants coming out to meeting after meeting. I heard stories that were astonishingly sad and scary. These people were brave, open, and honest to come forward. I, it is time for these brave tenants, our neighbors, these are our neighbors, over 40% of them, to be supported and protected, especially at this time. So I too will vote yes on this ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. I too, first and foremost, want to offer my condolences to Councilman Russo. Certainly we all know how close you were with your mother, and we offer our heartfelt condolences in this time, certainly a difficult time. And I personally want to thank you also for remaining with us today to work on and hopefully move with this important business that we have before us. I certainly also want to thank all the individuals who called in today, as has been noted before, we had a diverse group of individuals call, but certainly I think we've heard from even more diverse group of individuals over the year-plus that we've been discussing this issue and trying to come up with something that my council colleague, Councilman Schager just noted, is balanced and does try to address the needs of the many. When we talk about the different components, I heard many a landlord on there talk about the fact that while they would never raise rents to this amount, you know, this ordinance could still be a challenge. I would offer that if you would not be raising rents to this amount, then this should not be a problem, right? This ordinance is designed to stop the very bad actors. By and large, I don't think anyone here in town is saying that many of our landlords are the bad actors. There are a few, and this, this ordinance is designed to stop those abuses that are occurring where they are occurring. The numbers that are in here absolutely allow for individuals to continue to make a profit, they allow for individuals to make improvements, and those costs be factored into what's paid by renters, they factor in hardships and other components. They have many provisions that allow people to continue to invest in the Montclair that we know, but it also allows for what we really started with when we addressed, looked to address this issue. Montclair is a desirable place because of who we are. It's a desirable place because we are diverse, we are absolutely welcoming, we are diverse in terms of socio-economic, racially, sexual orientation, gender, identity, any way you can describe us, we are known as a diverse community. That is the big draw why people are coming here. What we are facing now is a situation where more and more people have the difficulty in affording to stay here. We've absolutely worked hard, I thank the mayor and my colleagues for our efforts to keep our tax increases at 0% the last two years, 1% over the last eight years on average, but we also know that rents, as they rise, in some cases 50%, 60%, that is unsustainable. That is not something that works in terms of keeping the diversity that we all hold so dear. And I will offer that if we lose that diversity, Montclair will not be as desirable a place as it is today. That is a detriment to our landlords as much as it is to our residents and the character and fabric of who we are. So we have worked long and hard at this. We've heard from many people over a year-plus, as I noted. We're certainly hearing from some more of our landlords right now. I would offer, I hope that many of those who called in today have actually read the ordinance, because many of the challenges they note are addressed in there. So it is with that, and with that focus on the human need, the human need to keep us a diverse town, the human need to make sure people have some stability in their ability to stay in their homes, in their rental units, the ability for people to understand that there is still money to be made, but it's got to be consistent with our values here in town. I am very pleased to have worked with my colleagues and listened to the residents who have come forward during this time, to come forward with something that works for all of us. We started this process well before this pandemic, but certainly, the goal is not to finish it well after this pandemic. Renters cannot wait, we cannot wait, the time is now. The time is now to make sure that people are protected and they feel secure and safe. So I too, like the colleagues you heard before me, will continue to support this ordinance. I am proud to have worked to help introduce this and remain supportive today, as supportive today as I was when it moved forward. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Rossville?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone that participated this evening in this. Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank everyone this evening who participated in this very robust conversation. I'm excited to know that there are so many people out there that really are interested in the dialogue, and so while I am very excited to vote yes and to move forward this tonight, I am also thinking that this is just the beginning of another phase of the process. And hopefully that phase will include those of you that had concerns or questions or wanted to offer some suggestions, and will continue to come out and be an active part of reviewing. out and be an active part of reviewing the ordinance and sharing what you have. This is the beginning of a process. We have an amazing ordinance that many of us have been working towards for at least four years. You heard Mr. Scott give a timeline from 2016 up and discuss the public meetings that we hosted and invited the community to attend. And so for at least the last four years consecutively, we've been working towards this in the last about a year. From April the 11th, we had a group of individuals where Hava Felicidad, one of the residents in the township, you know, was strong enough to stand up. And at that meeting, she said that she was not going to stop until she was able to galvanize the residents of this community to pass the ordinance for rent stabilization. And so I am just so grateful for her. Because of that, a committee was formed, the Rent Organization of the Montclair, the Tomb Tap, what is that, Tomb and its Organization of Montclair Organization that really gave us the energy to just move forward after many years of trying to get this passed. So I'm excited to pass this. I am also, you know, I share the concerns. I, I listened to Sharon Turner, who's, who's a good personal friend of mine and somebody that I admire and, and value and respect, and I understand when she talks about, you know, the difficult times that we're going through. And these are indeed extremely difficult times. These are times like none other. I don't think most of us remember times like this. Certainly, I do not. And so in these unprecedented times, it is difficult. We've had a lot of loss in the township of Montclair. And if I am recalling correctly, to date, we've lost 20 of our Montclair residents, and we've had at least 193 that have been affected by the coronavirus. And so these are indeed difficult times. I offer my condolences to my council colleague, Councilman Bob Russo for sure. His mom was a very kind person who I was privileged to know. But I also offer my condolences to the township of Montclair, not only for the people that had family members that succumbed to the coronavirus, but to the entire township, because we're all going through a grieving process. We've all experienced loss, loss of what was our normal yesterday, and loss of friendships, families, and, and the list goes on. And it's usually during these times that Montclair rises like none other. And we've done just that in the township of Montclair. We've been able to stand up and we've been able to, to feed people in our community that didn't have access to food. We've been able to check on seniors. We've been able to spend quality time with our families at home. So these things, maybe we would not have had the benefit of the time to do this if not for the novel coronavirus, so however we got here. I'm grateful to see that Montclair remains committed to doing that which is right and good. And my personal feeling is that now is the time to vote yes for this rent stabilization ordinance. If we wait, it will be too late. There is no better time than this. As we approach this holy week, tomorrow we begin Passover, then we move towards Good Friday and Easter. And in my mind, there is no other time that would be better to demonstrate that which is right and good, the things that demonstrate compassion and the equalization that this ordinance will do for the community. In, in all of the religions, we're taught to do, do for others, and, and they always talk about, you know, providing housing. And this is a wonderful opportunity to do just that, provide housing in a manner that is going to be dignified, just and right, and in a way that is going to allow us to keep the diversity in this beautiful township that we, most of us say that we move here for, and we mostly celebrate that. And so I'm going to vote yes. I am grateful for all of you for your years of participation. I'm grateful for those of you that came, came out. Again, I'm grateful for all of the, um, the, the Tomb Renters Association Group, and, and I'm grateful for people that picked up and called in tonight, or picked up and, and became more active when they actually realized at our council meeting that it actually passed on first reading. And so it's not that we weren't offering opportunities. It's not that we weren't publicizing the discussions on rent control. We certainly were, and we were going out of our way to exhibit the democratic process. But I think that when the vote was passed on the first reading, a lot of people realized that, you know, now many of us are very concerned. We've watched people being displaced from a township, and we can't sit still and continue to watch it. And so whatever brings you to the table this evening, I'm grateful. And I'm hoping that even those of you who, you know, are not in favor of this will please continue to come out. Your voice is important to me, and I think that that, that's what makes Montclair great. We can have difference of opinions, and we can respect one another. We don't need to call names. And at the end of the day, like I said, this is the beginning of a process, and I look forward to continuing to work you, work with you. So God bless you. Be safe. Continue to stay in for as much as possible. Continue to stay apart at least six feet and help to save a life. God bless you.
Thank you. Any other council members have comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm here.
Go ahead, Councilman McMahon. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, I too first of all, offer, Bob, my condolences on his mother's passing, and Robin as well on his job's passing. Um, I've, uh, also listened to everybody over the past year, the past three and a half hours. Um, I have a little different take than, than many. Uh, my, my family's been here since 1868. We've been both renters and owners. Currently, we are one owner and three renters. Uh, I am neither for nor against rent control. Uh, I have reviewed this particular proposed ordinance a number of times. I see a number, it has a number of good qualities, a number of flaws. And many of the flaws were pointed out by the callers tonight, who surprised me because they, I expected more in favor than, than, than not. Um, but their, their points, I thought, were well taken. Uh, I'm, I'm not happy with the, with the ordinance as, as written. Like I said, there's too many things to change at this point without a thorough rewriting. Um, I'd like to point out that the one unreplicable law is the law of unintended constitutions, and I see a lot of them here. Accordingly, I just cannot support the ordinance as written, and I'm going to be abstaining on voting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we miss Councilor Hurlock?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I also want to wish Bob and his family condolences on the passing of his mother. I had the privilege of meeting her several times. Lovely lady, Bob. And also, Robin, I'm very sorry for the circumstances that you're also experiencing now. I want to thank everyone for their participation on both sides of this very important issue. Please know that I took all of the comments seriously and carefully weighed all the options under the ordinance. I think the ordinance does attempt very well to try to strike a fair balance between some of the issues that were raised this evening and in the emails and in many notes and texts and calls that we've all received over the, the last week or so, particularly in the last four or five days. I would be willing to revisit the ordinance that, given the circumstances presented this evening by both sides. And when I say review, I'm referring to, you know, lowering the review period that has, that is, once this is instituted and implemented. I think we set a three-year window. I would be willing to lower that if my council colleagues would be so inclined. But based on what I've heard and what I've read, over the last week, I am still going to vote yes for the ordinance as I did during the first reading. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Councilor. I'm going to be joining Councilman McMahon in abstaining, which I did at the first vote, because it's my, my, my belief that, because I'm not going to be here for the period when this ordinance will be enacted, I don't feel that it's appropriate to, to, to vote on it. Um, there are some, some issues. I know that for, you know, for a number of years, my position was, was, was known in public sense. I was not a fan of rent control. Um, and there are, as we saw over the years, there were some, some bad actors who, I think, in my opinion, were sort of the catalyst of the, of the, of this movement. But that being said, I, I do have also had some concerns about timing and while this is going on with all the pandemic and so forth, but I hear other arguments going both ways. But, um, uh, just sort of streams of consciousness of my point, from my point of view at this point. But I'm going to be abstaining as well from this vote. So any, any other council comments?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Richmond, man. I, I like actually Councilor Hurlock's concept of revisiting, reviewing it sooner rather than later. I, as, as I recall, it is a 10-year sunset division, which is quite, quite a ways down the road. Uh, perhaps making that a much shorter timeframe.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Uh, just as a note on that, just for, for specificity sake, I do not believe it's a 10-year sunset. It's a 10-year mandatory review of it to make sure that it is working as anticipated. That said, I think Councilman Russo has noted a number of times, and it's a great point by Councilman Hurlock, and I think that's what he's looking for, was a commitment that we look at it sooner. This can be looked at by any council at any time, and certainly, as, as I think you've heard from a number of individuals, including Councilwoman Baskerville who noted this process, and Councilman Hurlock, this is something we will all be looking at, should we be fortunate enough to be in these positions. If not, certainly those who come after us, I'm sure will be looking at it very closely as well. So I agree with that. I think especially any new ordinance as you put it forward, there absolutely has to be a close analysis of it and a check to make sure it's working as, as desired. And I would certainly hope that's the case in this ordinance and commit to that as well. So I think it's a good suggestion to.
Thank you all. I appreciate that.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Um, and so if, if we vote yes on this this evening and it passes, is there language that we need to put in so that it will become effective immediately? Or what, what would that process be? My concern is that sometimes, and I'm sure this would not happen in Montclair, where I value all of the residents, landlords, renters, homeowners, everyone equally, but in some municipalities, I've heard about landlords that when they understand that a change is coming, may do such things as increase the parking or increase, you know, the pet fees or storage fees or increase the rents to try to get out in front of the passing of whatever the ordinance is. So will this become effective immediately?
I prefer to.
Attorney Karasik?
The ordinance, as it's written, and if it's adopted tonight, will be effective 20 days from today. However, in order to make it effective immediately, we would need a resolution declaring an emergency, which would have to be supported by five affirmative votes from the council. In other words, two-thirds of all the members of the council would have to vote for that resolution in order for it to be adopted. And.
I just question, are there criteria for emergency? Like, is it?
Not real. An emergency, we've, we've done this, you know, on several occasions, and generally speaking, the criteria has been it's not emergency as the state of emergency that's been declared by, you know, by the governor. Typically, emergencies mean that, that there's an important reason why it needs to become effective right away. We've done that with traffic safety ordinances when we feel that there's, and situations like that. So it doesn't require, you know, the level of emergency we're all seeing. But, so it's a, it's a judgment call, and I would think that, that there would be grounds for, for calling this an emergency situation.
Thank you, Mr. Karasik and Mayor Jackson. So based on that, I would like to, um.
Oh, one, I'm sorry, but it's your call. I want to make it clear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. No, no, I'm sorry, Councilor. I just wanted to make sure it was clear that it's not my call. It's the call of the council to decide whether there's an emergency.
Thank you very much, Attorney Karasik, and thank you, Mayor Jackson. Based on that, I would like to offer an amendment that, or the, the offer that we include that this become effective immediately.
Counselor, if you would first, if, assuming the ordinance is adopted, then a resolution could be proposed.
Oh, I couldn't tack it on.
To declare an emergency. No, it's not part of the ordinance.
Okay, I'll hold that for a minute then. Thank you.
Any other, any other council comments? Roll call?
Councilor Baskerville?
Yes.
Councilor Hurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McMahon?
Abstain.
Councilor Russo?
Yes.
Councilor Schager?
Yes.
Councilor Spiller?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson?
Abstain.
Uh, Counselor, if you may, if I may, I just wanted to, to say one more thing. The 20-day period after an ordinance is adopted before it takes effect is a period in which the law permits signatures to be gathered for a referendum. If the ordinance is made effective right away, I think the 20-day period is still in effect, that signatures could be gathered. Under the current circumstances, it's not clear to me at least, or maybe anyone, exactly whether that, that provision can, can actually be implemented, the referendum right, which is part of the state law. So, I mean, that's been an argument that's been made to us, so I just didn't want to, to leave it out. But that said, if you want to make, to make your, your resolution.
And so to be very clear, I certainly do, you know, believe in process of individuals being able to collect signatures and, you know, perhaps move for a referendum. So understanding that this will not in any way inhibit that process, I would like to offer that we vote to have this take effect immediately.
Well, you'd, you'd make your resolution, so you would need to second it.
Oh, I know. I guess nobody wanted to second it. That's what I was like waiting for. I was finished. And so if there is a second, then we move on. If not, but, um, yes, I, I was just trying to make sure that we were doing the best we could for the residents who may be looking at a change in a lease on the 15th of this month or whatever. So...
So, you know, maybe we don't need that. And if there's no second, then we'll move on. But I thank you for helping me to understand that process. And I'm not surprised.
Okay, okay. I think essentially our business is done for the evening. Are there comments from Mrs. Scannellberg?
No, Mayor, not at all.
Mr. Karasik?
Same condolences to Councilor Russo.
Madam Deputy Clerk?
Condolences to Councilor Russo.
Mr. Stafford? Yes, could you, Mr. Stafford have some statements about the COVID-19 issue?
I do, Mayor. I'm sad to have to relay that as of this evening, the latest official reports, even more recent than Councilor Baskerville's, moments ago, I learned that the confirmed number of COVID-19 cases in Montclair is, in fact, 193, but that that number now includes 21 individuals who have not survived the illness. It is expected, of course, that these numbers will increase as testing continues. We must, we must as a community do everything we can to try and control community spread. Trips from home allowed by Governor Murphy's executive orders must comply with the directives therein, and when in public, individuals must practice social distancing. This includes while getting exercise, this includes in parks. Today, the governor by executive order closed parks statewide. Our parks continue to be closed. Please, please, while you're getting your exercise, maintain social distancing. And social distancing, per the CDC, means keeping space between yourself and other people outside of your homes at all times. This means stay at least six feet apart from other people. Do not gather in groups and stay out of crowded places. Follow CDC guidelines by washing your hands open with, often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, especially after you've been in public places or after blowing your nose, coughing, or sneezing. Also, avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with unwashed hands. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Stay home as much as possible, and clean and disinfect frequently touched surfaces daily. For updates from the state, visit the New Jersey COVID-19 Information Hub. That can be found at covid19 nj.gov. This continues to be a one-stop shop for information relevant to COVID-19. And I'd like to point out specifically that within the state's COVID-19 Information Hub, there is a state jobs and hiring portal. As of this afternoon, 49,000-plus jobs with 614 different companies were posted. Again, 49,000-plus jobs with 614 different companies were posted. One seeking employment can search for jobs by industry, location, and by using other filters. General questions about COVID-19 may be posed by calling our state's Comprehensive Information and Referral Service by dialing 211. And of course, you can visit our township website, COVID-19 section for updates on township operations during this crisis. If you haven't signed up for the township's SWIFT 911 alert system, you are urged to do so now to receive updates from our township by blast. The sign-up form can be accessed from our website's homepage. And of course, you can follow our township Facebook page, Montclair NJ USA, and the township Twitter feed, @MontclairNJGov. Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill has posted on her webpage information regarding the availability of assistance to small businesses in the form of finances and guidance. More information can be found by searching sherrill.house.gov/coronavirus/business-resources or to pose questions directly. Interested parties may call the Congresswoman's office by dialing 973-526-5668. Likewise, Congressman Donald M. Payne Jr. has also posted on his webpage information regarding assistance available for small businesses, mortgage relief information, and programs to help workers and small businesses. More information can be found by searching pain.house.gov back, excuse me, slash coronavirus-help-residence-nj-10 or by dialing the congressman's office at 973-645-3213. Here are a few updates on township operations. Per Governor Murphy's executive order number 105, all New Jersey elections that take place on May 12, including our township's May 12 municipal election, will be conducted by vote-by-mail ballot only. All registered voters will be mailed a vote-by-mail ballot to Essex County Clerk's Office. To allow for enough time for voters to receive their ballots, vote, and then return the ballot by mail, the Essex County Clerk's Office will mail vote-by-mail ballots to voters on April 21 of 2020. So please keep your eyes out for that. By order of the New Jersey State Supreme Court, all municipal court sessions statewide are suspended through April 26. During this time period, though, certain emergent municipal court matters will continue to be handled by our municipal court, consistent with our Chief Justice's previous order of March 14. And our court personnel is accepting telephone calls for inquiries. Until further notice, all township public meetings like this one will be conducted remotely. And instructions on how the public can participate in individual meetings will be provided on our township website on each public body's page. Registration for the Montclair Institute for Lifelong Learning Classes, launched on schedule yesterday, all classes are now conducted online. And when our Division of Senior Services lifelong Montclair discontinued in-person programs at our Edgemont Park Shelter House in early March, staff began investigating ways that classes could continue remotely. By moving to these remote classes, the Mill is now able to accommodate more students this semester with 14 courses, most of which now have an enrollment capacity of 300. Some classes require a student to view the instructor's video, while others can be accessed with just a phone, and many will be aired, re-aired, if you will, on our TV 34. Our parking utility has waived April 2020 parking fees for current monthly permit holders. All parking meter and permit parking enforcement is suspended until further notice. If one has an overnight street parking permit, you may continue to park on the street. The Crescent Parking Deck, the Bay Street Parking Deck, and all municipal lots are available for overnight parking. But please remember, please, illegal parking continues to be enforced. Those of you watching on TV 34 tonight may notice the clearer picture. New video broadcasting equipment was recently installed, improving not only the broadcast picture but our station's live streaming capabilities. And to that point, TV 34 began its first broadcasts of classes for our older population, beginning with instructor Teresa Burry Van Mayerson's Sit and Be Fit and Chair Yoga with Lisi Espindola. Anyone can participate, and all of these classes will be uploaded to YouTube. For more information on our township operations, please visit the township's website at www.montclairenjusa.org and particularly see our COVID-19 section. Again, also, for more information on state government operations during this crisis, please visit the state's one-stop-shop COVID-19 Information Hub at covid19 nj.gov. Again, please note that there's no dash between COVID and 19 for our state's website. The township and its police department thanks the township resident who donated N95 ventilator masks to the MPD and to the township resident who donated $40, $50 gift cards to a local restaurant. Both donors wish to remain anonymous, and we respect their wishes in that regard, but we certainly want them to know how much we appreciate their generosity. The township continues to thank Tony's Kitchen, Antica Grill, the Montclair Center Bid, and the Kiwanis Club of Montclair for continuing to work together on their program to deliver free groceries and prepared meals to Montclair's older residents. Last week, the township donated $20,000 to Tony's Kitchen with an offer to match up to an additional $20,000 in donations toward the local Food Ministry's continued efforts providing meals to those in need during this crisis. Within two days, two days, Tony's Kitchen received online donations of more than $32,000 as well as a generous $20,000 donation from the Montclair Foundation. The goodwill of our township and the community will have a significant impact on ensuring that healthy food is available to all. Finally, I would like to take another moment to offer a sincere thank you and to express my true gratitude to all of our township public health staff, the Department of Community Services personnel, as well as our Public Safety, Information Technology, Department of Utilities, and other township personnel who have been selflessly working around the clock to keep us safe, connected, and informed. I am grateful for our personnel and for their efforts. I am appreciative of their dedication, and I continue to be proud to be a member on their team. Thank you, Mayor.